Say that she will not be joining us due to a number of scheduling snafus between her husband's work and the, you know, meeting the teachers Zoom stuff for this evening. So we will not have her. So I think we're just waiting for Ted.
Can I ask the board, just as a preference while we're having these Zoom meetings, do people mind if I sometimes have my video off? Is that, does that, like, if I'm not talking, is that, is that an issue for anybody?
Not a problem for me.
I have ADD and I get very restless. And the one good thing about virtual meetings as opposed to the in-person meetings is I can get up and walk around with my laptop. And so, but you don't need to see my background moving around all the time.
I understand completely. I did, I was doing that last night on another Zoom that I was on. I turned off the video, was walking around, so.
I have to say, if we get back to in-person meetings again, I may bring my knitting. I, you know, I tried bringing it to a department meeting once and it was so distracting to people that I didn't bring it again. But, you know, in, I was talking to another library board person at a, just somewhat randomly, someone at a library in, like, Tennessee. And she's like, I bring my knitting to all my meetings. And then there was a city council person there and he's, and she was like, I bring my knitting to all the meetings too. And I'm like, alright, if they do it in the South, we can do it here. And, you know, but there's a certain, like, cultural thing about people thinking that you're not paying attention or distracted. But I think it's a disability access thing in that I actually focus better when I'm doing something fidgety with my hands. So, anyway, that's my, my argument. I'm not gonna, for, for when we come back to in-person again, months from now, I think people should be allowed to bring their knitting.
Not a problem. Alright, I see Ted. So we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And so I will, I will take the role. Trustee Bloom. Okay. I saw you saying something, but I didn't quite catch the audio. Virginia?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, there we go.
I am here, okay.
Okay. Trustee Burns?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Here.
Trustee Mohar Raj?
Present.
Trustee Foss?
Here.
Trustee Fruth is here. Trustee Glavin is absent. Alright, and then, next item on our agenda. David, would you mind sharing?
You want me to share the screen?
Yeah, for the, as we could.
Sure, hold on one moment.
Thank you.
How is that?
That is good. Alright, thank you, I appreciate that. Alright, the next item will be the approval of minutes. We have our agenda for our, from our, minutes from our regular meeting of July 28th. Does anyone have any changes or comments regarding the minutes from that meeting? Hearing none. Are there, we also have the minutes from our meeting on July 21st, our special meeting then. Does anyone have any corrections or comments for those minutes? Okay. Not hearing anything for there. Are there any comments or corrections related to the, from the minutes of our special meeting on August 4th?
I just want to apologize again that I missed that meeting. We had a unexpected urgent care trip. Everybody's fine. But it was a little, there was some screaming, all is well now.
I'm glad to hear that, that everyone is okay. That's the most important part of that. If there are no other comments or corrections to those, any of those minutes, is there a motion to approve all of the, all the minutes as a group as presented?
So moved?
Moved by Ted, is there a second? I heard a, I heard a second. Was that Virginia or Colleen?
It was Virginia.
Virginia, okay. Alright. Ted, would you mind acting as secretary for the rest of the meeting for the roll call votes?
Truly, and I even have a piece of paper and a pencil.
Okay. So I will call the question. I'll, this is a yea or nay in favor of approving the minutes.
Trustee Fruth?
Yes.
Trustee Foss, yes. Trustee Marian Mohar Raj?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Byrne?
Yes.
And, Trustee Christian Harris?
Yes.
And there's Virginia Bloom, it says Virginia Bloom, but usually you go by the, the double barrelled name. Yes?
Either way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and Trustee Glavin is absent, so the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is community member and visitor comments. I did not, I did not receive any comments. David, did you receive anything?
I have not received any written comments at all, but we have at least one guest who would like to speak to the board. His name is Mr. Tony Yuskin, and I'm going to unmute his microphone now so he can speak to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yuskin, go ahead. Mr. Yuskin?
You have to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good. The item I wanted to propose before the board is that for the public use computers, there's only one session per day allowed. And I was requesting if an optional second session per day, not necessarily every day, but on an as-needed basis, could be considered.
Okay. I, we appreciate your comment, and I will follow up with David and see, we will take that under advisement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is, there's one other person who is listed as a guest for the meeting. Matt, I don't recognize that person's name, so we're going to, I'm going to just ask if they would like to address the board. And the first name is Karen, last initial S.
Karen, do you, do you wish to address the board at this time?
Oh, thank you, no, I am just, I'm just listening in to see what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for tuning in. Alright. So we will move on to trustee comments and board calendar.
Should I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mary.
Hey, everybody. So I just, I had asked, it's in a quick note to Matt and David earlier today, saying, my semester started today at UIC. And I just wanted, I thought it might be helpful to give people a sense of what's going on generally in the community. UIUC is doing, down in Champaign-Urbana, is doing very heavy protocols. Pretty, pretty impressive, I think, to have a semi-open campus. UIC does not have anything near that level. Most of us are teaching remotely. And the main reason I wanted to bring it up is, I, in, when we're talking about school support later in this meeting, the main issue that's come up today so far has been basically tech support. And so I, it leads me with a question of whether, whether people generally are feeling like they have sufficient tech support for Zoom teaching, Zoom learning, Zoom support of, I mean, not necessarily only Zoom. In fact, at UIC, we use Blackboard, et cetera. I know that our own tech people are slammed, like, just completely slammed with requests. I had four or five different tech problems today, and, you know, luckily, I was able to turn to my husband to, and Facebook, to talk me through them, so I didn't have to call the IT people. And they were all very quickly resolved. It was, you know, like, on Blackboard, you have to, like, click in three different places to make a file visible to your students. It's incredibly stupid, but it's the system that UIC is committed to using. So, and I had found two of the places, but I'd forgotten the third. That's like one example. So like, someone on Facebook fixed it for me in a moment. So I, I feel like as we're talking about virtual support, I, like, some kind of tech triage line might be worth considering. And I don't know what would be involved, whether we have staff available for that, whether it be additional funding to hire someone part-time, or, I don't know. But I wanted to put it on the table, because it was a mess today. And I'm pretty tech savvy, so if it was hard for me and for a bunch of my students, I'm sure many people had a much more difficult time. And of course, Zoom crashed yesterday because, presumably because there was so much of a load. Blackboard logins crashed for a while. Canvas, which is, I think, what the elementary schools use, crashed for a while. So there's also a set of tech issues along with that. So, wanted to add that to the general picture of what's going on. And it may all resolve within a couple of weeks, as everyone gets used to it. But UIC went back this week and the elementary schools go back next week.
Well, thank you, Mary Ann. It's definitely food for thought. I, you know, I think we're all heard from, at least are either ourselves or some, one person we knew about the Zoom outage yesterday, but I'm sure.
And I, I mean, I haven't had time to set it up myself yet, but what I was thinking about doing last week was, was simply like, you know, a parent Facebook group or Slack, maybe with the PTOs, again, to just be like, hey, I'm working from home, I can be tech support and keep an eye out on this thing and answer questions. But someone's got to organize it, so.
Okay. I appreciate that. Any other trustee comments?
Yes, I have a, I have a question for David. And I go online to the Oak Park website, and I would love to be able to ask a reference librarian a question, which I used to be able to do by going to the library. And I find it difficult to ask a question directly. I can, like, go on and say, you know, ask a librarian and all this stuff, but is there a way that we could have an online reference librarian that will be available real time? And this kind of gets to Mary Ann's question, too.
We do have an online chat feature on our website now, and if you use it, you will reach a library staff person in, in real time. That is, I don't think that's available necessarily for all of the hours right now that we're open, but I think Lori, who's on the call, probably knows, or maybe Alexandra, who's also on the call, might know a little bit more about how often or how, how many hours a day that's available. But we do have a live chat feature on our, on our website.
And where is that on the website page? Because it's kind of difficult to navigate to it.
So, sorry, I'm just gonna hop in here, because this is my fourth.
Of course.
I'm about to talk about it when we get to the section of the board meeting. It's one of the things we've set up during this time. It's a, it mimics our hours that we're open, so it's 10 to 6, Monday through Saturday. And it's an icon that pops up, I, maybe I'll, if I can, I'll share my screen or try to show you, but it will, actually it won't show up right now, because we're after 6 o'clock. So it's a small icon, I think it says, let's chat, or do you have a question? It kind of changes so we can grab your attention. But it only appears on the website when someone is logged in and can answer your question. So it will only appear between 10 and 6, Monday through Saturday. But there will be, there's always at least two staff members on the other end, and I can't guarantee that they are all master degree librarians, but they're all library staff and can answer your questions. And if they can't answer it exactly at that moment, they'll get you to the person that can.
That answers most of my question. I was just trying to find out a way to ask a library staff member.
Yeah, yeah.
I couldn't find it, I couldn't find it on the page.
Yeah, and so if you couldn't find it on the page, it was probably between, not between 10 and 6, Monday through Saturday, because it does show up even on, like, any page. You click off the main page and it followed. It's a little creepy, it follows you to wherever, whichever, wherever you are. So actually, on our end, we can see, like, oh, they're asking about, you know, RB Digital, because they, they were also on our, I can see that they were on our magazine page, and so we can help that, we can see where, where they may have not missed, like, oh, they, they didn't get there that far on their webpage, and we can actually see where they were on the webpage when they clicked on it, so.
Thank you so much.
It does show up on every page. You're welcome.
Thanks, Alexandra.
Excellent. Any other trustee comments?
I do have one question, if Billy is on the line.
I think he is.
I just happened to look at how people can take off on their taxes, whether they're working from home. And I realized that most of our employees, when they were working from home, could not take off the taxes from their home office, because they have a W-2. So I was just wondering whether Billy knows about home offices and remote learning.
I, I know very little about it. Yeah, I would, I would go to a, an accountant or a tax professional.
But, so we, we all can't take this off on our taxes.
Ted, I, I file a Schedule C for my small business, and so I could take the home office deduction. I, I never have, because it is supposedly a red flag for auditing, so.
And you're abso, you're absolutely right, Mary Ann. And so, even though, even though all of our employees for, under Schedule 1 or Stage 1, were working from home, that's not going to work as a tax dodge.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it for anyone if.
So let's move on. Any other trustee comments? Okay. We'll look at the board calendar. We have our, I, nothing is really troubling out on me. The, David, is there anything you want to raise to our attention?
Only that we are going to have the Barbara Ballinger lecture this year as a virtual event on October 11th. And next month, I will probably introduce a, a formal conversation on the agenda to talk about Election Day. Because there was a proclamation earlier this year by the governor of Illinois declaring Election Day a holiday for all public, or most public agencies in the state of Illinois. And our attorney, the library's attorney, has given his opinion that that proclamation includes the library, which means that we would have to be, we would have to declare Election Day as a, as a no-service day and give our staff members all the day off. That complicates, the situation is complicated for us, because all of our facilities are polling places, which means we have to have some staff presence in the buildings, or at least for part of the day. But there's also, I've been told, a, some kind of a, some kind of objection that's been filed, and there's some, there's some hearing pending about it to see who exactly it applies to and who does not. But for right now, it, it appears that we would have to have Election Day this year as a, as a no-service day, and our staff members given, given the day off. And we've never done that before. So I just want to, since Election Day is on the calendar, I just want to point out that we'll, we'll need to have a conversation about that, either in September or October, to, to make sure that we establish that as a holiday. Okay?
Okay. Alright, make, yeah, I think, I think it makes the most sense to move forward with the thinking that it will apply to us. I'd rather us prepare for that eventuality than, than have to scramble for a, a change at the last minute.
Right. Otherwise, nothing else on the calendar that I think is necessarily that, that noteworthy.
Okay.
So then we do have, in this part of the meeting, we're responding to some requests by some trustees to hear from staff members directly about their experiences or their teams' experiences in what we're calling Service Level 2. So we have three members of the management team here tonight. Alexandra Skinner, who you've already heard from this evening, who's the manager of adult services. Jennifer Norborg, who is the manager of children's services. And Barbara Fitzgerald, who is the manager of material services. And they're both in turn going to, going to speak for a few minutes. And then if you have questions for any of them, I'm sure if they're able to, they'd be happy to answer your questions, too. I did not ask them in what order they wanted to go, so.
Okay, thank you. As David, thank you for that introduction, David. And yes, I'm Alexandra Skinner, and I'm the manager of adult services, which is primarily the second and third floor of the main library, working with the other man, other managers on the team. I wanted to thank you for your time this evening. So adult services has been focused on providing assistance and connection since March 12th, and obviously before that, but since the lockdown, we, one of our biggest projects was moving all programming online. Since, since the lockdown on March 13th, we've had over 80 programs have been offered virtually. Connections are being made in Oak Park, but also patrons are coming in from the Philippines, Panama, Switzerland, and Iran, as well, as well as all over the United States. Language conversations, including Spanish, French, and English, are extremely popular, and that gets a lot of these international, but also from all over and in Oak Park. Health and wellness programs, especially our grief writing workshops, and death cafes, and the meditation meetings are also extremely popular right now. We're also still offering author visits, job seeker seminars, improv and writing workshops, but that was a huge undertaking in April, when we, when we were able to kind of create policies and procedures and, and move all of our programming to, to online and virtual. We also started a new service that we talked about, the, a new contact point for patrons, which is virtual chat. It's available on our website. Again, it appears on every page on our website. It's a small icon at the corner, right corner of the screen, and it mimics our in-building operating hours, which is Monday through Saturday, 10 to 6. Since May, we've answered over 350 questions through virtual chat. Both in-building and virtually, one of our biggest areas we focus on is technology assistance. Just one librarian alone answered more than 52 digital library ebook questions in April. So that was obviously a huge month for, for questions on, how do you, how do I use this? But even last month, that same librarian answered 27 digital library ebook questions. So by promoting, using, and helping virtually with digital resources, we're, it's still a huge service we provide. In the building, we have also created a whole new system, also working with the IT department to allow for technology access to, to Oak Park public library cardholders and still maintain best safety practices. So since Service Level 2, we now have a system in place where Oak Park public library cardholders can make 45 minutes appointments, one per day. They take place on the half hour and end of the quarter after. Having this consistent timeframe allows for patrons to be able to leave the space and for staff to know when it's safest to go out to disinfect the computers. So we always know between the 15 and 30 hour mark that we have that 15 minutes to go out there, that there won't be patrons there using the computers, and we can wipe down all the computers, making them safe again for the next patron. It also encourages patrons to be in the building for less than one hour, which is, again, part of best safety practices right now. And patrons have access, all patrons have access to our printer, copier, scanner, and fax machine right now. As a team, we've also collaborated with other library service areas on shelving, pulling holds, contactless delivery, wireless printing, and so much more. I'm so proud of the work we've done and continue to do during this unique time. So if you have any questions, I can, of course, wait till the end, and I'm sure Jennifer and Barbara and I would be happy to answer any of your questions at the end. So I'll pass it over to Jennifer now.
Thanks, Alex. Hi, everybody. I'm Jennifer Norborg, the manager of children's services, and just have some notes here. Just want to say that I have been incredibly inspired and humbled by how the children's staff was able to adapt to our new reality and update our services in order to serve the public during the closure and during Level 2. The children's department began creating and sharing early literacy videos on March 18th, which was less than a week after the buildings closed. For many of our young patrons, daily or weekly library visits have been part of their lifelong routine. With so much change happening in everyone's lives, we wanted to make sure we could keep the continuity of visits for the kids who are used to seeing us so often. We also wanted to help facilitate conversations between kids and caregivers on tough topics like the virus, which is something that comes up often in our Storytime classes and in our early bird reader videos. Storytimes are the bread and butter of our programming for kids, and we wanted to offer connections and continuity for the kids who are used to seeing us in person. This turned into the virtual learning and fun series. For Phase 1, we uploaded three to five-minute videos every weekday at morning at 10:00 a.m., which is the same time as the main library Storytime, so that, that kept the pattern going. Children's staff worked with communications and the facilities team in order to ensure our space was reconfigured and that procedural and safety information and wayfinding signage was posted prior to the Level 2 opening in July 22nd. Staff also worked with communications to write and produce the welcome video for the children's department. We have been using the OPPL Safer Working Guidelines during Level 2 and have been really pleased, for the most part, about how patrons have been respecting the new rules. The children's department staff pivoted our normal summer engagement opportunities to meet kids where they are. We visited the summer school Zoom classrooms instead of the physical spaces. We read stories and talked about library services with kids from all three District 97 programs, Extended School Year, which is the special ed program, Newcomber, which is the English language learners, and Summer Launch, which is reading support. Summer reading prizes have also been delivered to many students with aid from their teachers. In addition, we were able to provide books for the Park District site at Ridgeland Commons, as, as well as for the Ready Set Kindergarten Program, which received weekly curated book selections, as well as weekly virtual Storytimes. In addition to the numerous story, fingerplay, rhyming literacy building videos, topics of some of the videos we've produced with community assistants led by Wanta Griffin, our multicultural learning coordinator, include yoga, Ramadan with Nima Ali, Introduction to the Jembe with Akuma Kids dancers, Tap Tap Bus Haitian singing with Creole roots, Greek coffee-making with Dino Andrews, Calaveras with Nora Sanchez, and Pride Month history videos with Shelley Harris. And I just also want to give a shout out to the wonderful Hope of Juneteenth Celebration community video that featured Wanta as well, which was really beautiful. We also had haiku, origami, and chess tutorials, and SRP. SRP went virtual this, this year. We had to reimagine this year's SRP, Imagine Your Story, by quickly planning a virtual program after the closure made an in-person version impossible. Kids and families track their readings and activities with an easy-to-use cloud-based platform called BeanStack, which is accessible from anywhere through an app browser and web. At this point, our SRP participants have achieved the summer reading goal of 450,000 total minutes read. As of today, 1,109 kids have registered for SRP. We weren't really sure what to expect with a virtual program and had 500 registrants as a goal when we began, so we're really happy with this number, and we have six more days to go in the program. One thing that has been a particularly joyful aspect during this time has been the prize bead delivery. Staff has had a lot of fun packaging beads and decorating personalized envelopes with stickers, bookmarks, and beads. I can say personally that I have been greeted with a lot of enthusiasm when I happen to interact with families on my, on my route. At this point, 13 staff members have delivered 16,750 beads to area families, and we have a final. And we have a final delivery coming up soon. So that's what we've been doing. So we've been really busy. And I have a few other things looking ahead. We have begun a storytime video schedule that will continue through December. That includes uploading two virtual learning and fun videos and one multicultural video. And leading, we're going to lead two live virtual story, story head classes on Zoom every week. We are also creating weekly themed posts with links to previously shared videos, additional activities and resources, and book recommendations for caregivers. The children's services team will collaborate with the community, community engagement team to offer a service similar to home delivery in order to deliver resources to local daycares and institutions. Delivery, delivery will be contactless and follow the safety guidelines outlined in the library's safer working guide. In addition to books and kits, we are, we will also be offering to deliver available multicultural collection artifacts and items to people. We will be helping support Francis Craft's E-Team and the new Power of Partnerships program tutoring initiative. It's a really exciting thing that's, that's happening. And last but not least, in order to give additional support to District 97 teachers and families, I'm really happy to announce that we have hired Anne Bensfield to serve as our new part-time distance learning coordinator. In this role, she will be mobilizing Oak Park Public Library resources, especially digital ones, in order to engage with District 97 schools in an approach that uplifts our shared missions to work on equity. Anne has worked with us previously as an intern assistant and librarian, and she has really deep ties with District 97. So we're really, really excited to have her coming back on board. She is looking forward to it too. And she says that she's looking forward to growing with the organization and the community during these unique times. And in closing, I just want to say I am really grateful to the library administration and the board's support. And I'm really proud of what our staff has been able to accomplish despite the challenges we are all facing these days. So thanks.
Can I ask a quick question? Or was that the end of the report?
Yeah.
So I, I was just thinking, it, it all sounds great. And I, I do think, I'm guessing we're going to have a big surge next week in the need for tech support. So maybe even just for a few days, if some additional people can be helping out with that, that might be enough. I don't know. I had one other thought listening to, you know, all this amazing Zoom programming and so on that you've been creating. I've attended since March, five online conventions that have, pivot is clearly the word of the year, by the way. So five conventions that have pivoted to online from being in person. And with, with, you know, more or less success, they've gotten smoother as we've, as we've gone on. And one, one sort of major thing that's come out of that has been a recognition of the financial advantages and disability-related advantages and globalization-related advantages to having strong virtual programming. A lot of people able to participate in the conventions who wouldn't have been able to afford travel there, et cetera, so on. And so I'm curious whether, I know we're, we're all still in like coping mode. Speaking as someone who started classes today, I'm still in coping mode, but I am curious about these, if some of the programming you've created is being recorded and could maybe be reused for future virtual programming, or if it's all just live. If it, if it, if it is so far all live, that might be worth thinking of as a supplement to the library and maybe, and you know, depending on how long it is before we can be back in the buildings again and so on, maybe start thinking towards something like a, you know, a Saturday festival of kids reading or something like that with, like a mini convention with like, over the course of the day, programming. And that might even be something that could be repeated as a virtual component once the, once we're able to see each other in person again. Anyway. Those are just a bunch of random thoughts. You've probably had most of them already, but throwing them out there in case they're helpful.
Thank you. I, I like your random thoughts. Those are really fun. And just to underline what Jody just typed in, that yes, we do have a number of videos available on the website that are not live. We do like to have the like, you know, the yin and yang of the live things as well as the things that we can, we can keep and repeat. So those are definitely available if you go to the children's page of the, the website. There's a whole bunch of things there to share for sure.
And Jennifer, this is Ted Foss. I have a question. You mentioned the park district site at Ridgeland Common. Is that like a little pop-up library? I don't really know about this.
It was, for all intents and perfect purposes, it was sort of like a, a pop-up that was there during the course of the summer camp. I pulled about 120 books for kids of various ages and it was there for the duration of the camp. So it's all returned now, but that's sort of one of, one of the projects that we did for the, for the summertime for the park district.
So those pop-up libraries do work?
Well, the counselor was very appreciative of it and said that the kids really enjoyed it. So I think that it definitely worked. I don't know, I don't know if it would technically be considered a pop-up. It's not, it wasn't like a little free library or something like that. It was just a collection that was able to be shared with that particular group of kids for a pretty long period of time.
Thank you.
I know Barbara Fitzgerald is waiting patiently to, to give her experiences. So Barbara, go ahead.
As David said, I'm Barbara. I am the manager of material services. And throughout our COVID-19 response plan, material services has focused on how to provide access to resources and support engagement with the collections within the changing environment of each service level. The commitment intention that the team, intention that the team showed really has inspired and energized me throughout the past several months. The material services team is made up of two separate areas, the bibliographic team and the collection team. The bibliographic team is in charge of acquisition, cataloging and processing of materials, ordering library supplies and fulfilling interlibrary loan requests. The collection team is in charge of all areas of the selection process, focusing on building diverse and inclusive collections. Both areas work closely together to ensure materials are accessible and meet community demand. A major shift during COVID is that the bibliographic team is working in the library and the collection team is, continues to work from home and will continue doing this throughout. This led to some changes in many processes and the opportunity, I guess I would say, for different communication options. Team members have been open and responsive to working through any barriers that arose. And they're really focusing on end goals and not the obstacles. Material services really embrace the opportunity to meet community needs. One of the first steps we took was to increase digital access to as many resources as possible. Here are just some examples of what we did. We increased the hoopla and canopy checkouts. We ordered more copies in overdrive of titles. We added new resources like Brainfuse Help Now and National Geographic for kids to support school age children. We recently negotiated a new newspaper service called Global News Stream that is going to provide us digital access to sources we didn't have before, like the Wall Street Journal. We didn't have them digitally, the Wall Street Journal, Barron's, Crane Chicago, and the Chicago Defender. We work really closely with communications to get this all out there, but to also to create title recommendations that can come out as curated lists or videos. These can typically be found in the resuggest section of the webpage. As we planned to open the buildings back to the public, we had to focus on how to restart our physical and materials receiving and processing procedures. While the buildings were closed, we continued to order and catalog new materials, but we were unable to receive deliveries. Our largest vendors have been and still are dealing with supply chain issues and workflow restructuring constraints. We continue to work closely with them to make sure these vendors can get us the materials we need in an efficient manner so we can meet community demand. For the material staff coming back to the library, we use the OPPL safer working guidelines to develop staffing process where team members could come back into the library and work safely. The staff came back to new systems and changed workflows to accommodate what was happening during each service level. But they were really able to power through a three-month backlog of materials. In the first month, they were back in the library. We are now caught up in receiving new materials as they come in. Over the past several months, we saw new demands on materials beyond the need for more digital access. We saw the need for more internet, internet access. And in response, we added a new hotspot vendor and we added new hotspots to our collection. While we saw a need for greater access to certain physical materials, so we updated the loan and hold rules on these so that now all magazines can be checked out and placed on hold by Oak Park patrons. Hot pick materials are now holdable for the first time. We extended the loan period for hotspots for three weeks. And we added a new service called Book Club Kits to support our community book clubs. It's 10 copies of a title and reading suggestions that have gone over pretty well. All of these changes have really excited people in the community. What most amazes me throughout all these is, are the changes and the hurdles the material staff continued to work through and just get their work done. Many times working in this atmosphere, like for everyone, it, it's overwhelming and it can sometimes, you feel like you're losing connection with everyone. I was really lucky because I was able to have great conversations with leadership and other managers to help work through the hurdles that came up. I'm even luckier to have a materials team that was open to changes, a really flexible and committed to doing the work to help the community engage with our materials. Some examples of the team pulling together and really, I guess I'll use pivot, pivot, is that the collection team who's mainly working from home came on site to help get the shelves ready, the new shelves ready for patrons coming back in the library, organizing and making sure we had the newest materials on the shelves, which is what sometimes other people do. But they came in and did that because there was backlog in other places. The big team will continue to work on all their primary responsibilities. It's also helping out with special projects like missing materials and their shelving materials when there's some overflow. And I should say, March through July, the big team created 10,327 new items in the catalog, which means they were actually also then put on the shelves. And the collection team ordered over 11,000 new titles. We were able to do all this by having some really honest conversations with each other and talking about what was going on in our lives and what the workflows needed to look like. We also had to have empathy and understanding with each other when the processes just needed to change one more time. I'm really grateful in truth for the support the library administration has given throughout this, other managers and the library board. It is made, having to make these pivots, having to make these changes just a lot easier. And I'm especially thankful for my fellow colleagues that I'm working with. It is a pleasure each day to try to get the materials out to everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you. I appreciate it. Does anyone on the board have any other questions for Alexandra or Barbara or Jennifer?
I, I put a question in the chat, but I'll go ahead and just ask. And I think Barbara touched on it a little bit, but what kind of changes have the three of you made that you think you'd like to see kept? I, I know in my world, this is kind of forced innovation. And it sounds like everybody there has been really, you know, looking for, for new things to do and new ways to engage. So what things have you found that you think you want us to keep moving forward?
Great question. I think for certainly, virtual programming is allowing us to reach so many people and, and also allowing, we've, we've had comments and, and heard from patrons that they said, oh, I can't make it into the library and this is great. So some kind of hybrid, I mean, I'm not sure what it's going to look like going forward, but it's definitely something that we're going to try to incorporate, having virtual programming. And the recording is definitely something, it, it really depends a lot on the author sometimes or the presenter and their copyright and their, you know, what, what they're feel comfortable with having recorded. But moving forward, I think that's definitely something that we will, that we'll, we'll try to incorporate.
Yeah, I would just like to echo that statement. I, I feel like the whole hybrid idea, the idea of, it doesn't have to be an either or in-person programming versus virtual programming. I think that we've, we've shown that both can work. And I think that having a lot more virtual programming options even, I mean, obviously when we can be in person, we're really going to want to be in person and see those kids in person. But I think always having that option, and we've shown that we can do it and we're, we're getting to be experts at it. So I think that we would definitely want to keep some aspect of that going forward in, in any type of new, old, normal situation for sure.
I would say some of the shifts to digital access that vendors have opened up to us have been really great. And I would like to see that continue and continue to supplement what we have in physical. Or maybe we just have access that we've never had before to digital things that I think is a great opportunity for people that can't always come in if we're not open. These are great opportunities.
Thank you, all three of you. And thank you for all of the work and coordination and everything you've been doing.
Thanks again. The, the one thing I want to say about service level two now that we can certainly get into more details about or talk more about in staff reports. If, unless, just in case all of the trustees haven't already been informed of it through our story and through other communications. We have now, well, by the end of this week at least, we will have transitioned away from a contact-free pickup of materials outside of the main library building to a, to a, a method where our patrons, most of them at least, are coming into the main library and going up to the second floor to some specially installed shelving where they can pick up and check out all of their, their holds on their own. We, we transitioned to that system this past week primarily because of the incredible additional volume of materials that started coming in the moment we were able to allow people to begin placing holds through Swan and borrowing materials from other libraries again. And then, and then the, that volume just went up exponentially and it was going to become almost impossible for staff to, to continue to manage that volume in the, using the method that we had. And we, we knew that we would eventually this year have to transition away from that anyway as, as the seasons change from summer into, into winter. In response to that, we know that we have plenty of patrons in, in Oak Park who would find it difficult, if not impossible, to come to the library anyway to pick up their materials. And certainly those who are in high-risk categories that make it very, they make it not advisable for them to come into the building. And so Sarah Yale and her team are really ramping up home delivery options for lots of eligible patrons and are already getting many more requests to do that. And are training additional staff to be able to deliver materials to patrons in their homes and other places. Again, in a, in a very contact-free, contact-free way. So I wanted to, and we also specified early hours of our, of our operation each day. Again, particularly for patrons who may be vulnerable or in high-risk categories to come in and pick up their materials. So I wanted to make sure, again, I, I assume that all the trustees had seen that information in our story or in other, or in other communications, but I wanted to mention it specifically. So.
Thank you, David, for that. This is Ted Foss. And I did pick up some holds on the second floor and it worked beautifully. And the con, was basically contactless delivery. I could actually self-check out and all of that stuff. And the parking garage is open. It's a little, it's a little spooky to go into the library when there are only 10 patrons there. But it all seemed to work very well and I could see that huge volume of things that you have on hold.
Yes, a lot, a lot. And we're giving staff options to do some of that work outside of the, of the public hours of operations so that staff can, can assist and come into the building and do some of those tasks when patrons are not there, again, to, to keep people as safe as possible and to limit the occupancy of the building during hours that, that were, that were welcoming people into the building.
Now, David, when I was at the library yesterday, I noticed that there was a, a note that I think Jody Colo had made that said that there are actually early, early hours for patrons who are like my age or compromised between 10 and 11. Is that true?
Right, yeah. As, as I mentioned, the, the early part of the day each day. Right, yeah. As, as I mentioned, the, the early part of the day each day, we've designated for those, for those people in vulnerable or high-risk categories so that they might feel a little bit more comfortable about coming into the building. I, I would say that we're, we're still nowhere near what the Public Health Director actually indicated could be our maximum occupancy at any one time, even with this change. So in other words, we don't, we don't have great numbers of people in the building at any one time. However, we did want to, since we've stopped doing contact-free outside the building, we did want to make that time early in the day available to patrons generally who are, are in those higher-risk categories.
And it was lovely yesterday to see little kids and their parents come into the library, Jennifer.
Oh, yeah.
Um, thank, thank you, Ted. Yeah, it's, it's really great to see their faces when we get the chance to, that's for sure.
Very, enjoy it, yes.
Well, I just want to note, I pasted some stuff into the chat. Basically, I don't know how closely the other board members are tracking this. But what we should expect to see as the schools open up, ISU opened up a few weeks ago for students moving onto campus and had a pretty massive spike between just Friday and Monday. And, you know, everyone's doing different procedures. Some are going to handle it better than others. Our School of Public Health people are doing a great job. Some of the other departments, not so much. And as, as you might expect. So in, I, I would not be surprised. I mean, I don't know if everyone saw the governor put out a new rule today, I think, saying that you're required to wear your mask when you go to restaurants now. So that, you know, if your server is coming by, you have to put your mask up. And I, I'm just going to expect to see more things along those lines and we may well, I, I wouldn't be surprised at all if we rolled back a level for the state. In which case I would imagine the library would have to pivot back, unfortunately.
Yeah, if there were, if there were a significant rollback to a very early stage where there is another general lockdown, if you will. And yes, the library would be prepared to transition back to just offering virtual and digital services again, if that's what we needed to do. Okay, Matt, are you ready to move on to staff reports?
Yes, I think we're ready to move on to staff reports.
Okay. Um, so we have, I've given you my narrative report for the month and happy to answer any questions that you, that you have about it. Meanwhile, I just want to point out a couple of things here that we will be talking about a little bit later, including a continuing conversation about the HEPS of the Children's Foundation request to use some library space. The power of partnerships, work with Francis Kraft and the Equity Team. Francis herself is going to begin working in the main library twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, beginning this Thursday. For a while, it will just be her and then potentially a few tutors inside the building with her. She mentioned to Lori Pulliam and to me the other day when she visited the library that she still anticipates, does anticipate that the majority of the tutors, many of them who don't even, aren't even living or working right now in the Schuylkill area because they're at school in different places, will just be doing their work remotely. So even when there are additional tutors that might be coming into the building and even if those tutors end up making appointments to see individual children or families for some after-school hours assistance in person. She still expects to have very few people actually in, inside the building. But she'll be beginning that work soon. And I hope that all of you saw my email that I've now worked with Rich Harwood and his team to reschedule our Oak Park lab as a virtual lab. It'll be, it'll take place in two parts. First part over two days in December and the second part over two days in January, including also a, an hour and a half orientation in the first week of December. So I'm very excited about that. And then also gave an update about our anti-racism journey and work with Rashida and all the activities that have been already taking place there and that are scheduled to take place. So if anyone has any specific questions about my part of the report first and then we'll move on to the, to the others, I'm happy to answer them.
Not hearing, is anybody, if nobody has any questions, we'll move on to the strategic objectives report.
So then we have, yeah, we have the strategic objectives report. And along with that, three additional documents that were included in your board packet that we'll talk about in turn. The core use statistics report, the community satisfaction report from a recent May-June survey and the staff well-being, results of the staff well-being survey that, that Billy Treese developed and administered to staff, which I think, again, he would be happy to answer questions about. But starting generally with the, with the strategic objectives report, were there any questions about any of the materials here or any of the information here that any of the trustees would like to take note of or ask? Okay. Um, then I did want to be sure that you took note of several of these accompanying reports that are described in detail in the, in the narrative. The first is this dashboard that you see here on the screen of core use statistics with 2020 year-to-date totals for all of the, of the various metrics that we include. And where it is available, an indicator of how those 2020 monthly totals correspond or, or match the average monthly number for the year 2019. And obviously you can see what has happened in, in these months that we have been, that we have transitioned to, to respond to COVID, to COVID-19. Particularly amazing, I think, or maybe not, depending on your point of view, are the, is the usage of digital materials. And you can see there that the, the 2019 average monthly total for the use of all digital materials and, and digital materials, of course, is not just digital books. It's digital audiobooks and music and videos and all of our digital materials combined. But you can see how, how that, that number has in some months more than doubled the usage. Indicating how much people have been using and transitioned to, to the use of, the use of digital materials. Um, I also wanted to, to comment on a request that came from Christian last month and perhaps a couple of other trustees to see these core use statistics compared to numbers over a five-year period. And so since the last, so since the last, since the last meeting, Jody and I and others on the leadership team have had conversations with Mallory Edgar, our, our data analyst, mentor of data analytics about that. And she had a lot to say about that. So, but generally the, the message was, yes, we can, we can obtain, we can provide and we can compare statistics over a five-year period from 2015 to 2020 for a great many of these metrics that you see, that you see in this report. But there are a couple of things that we want to say about that. Firstly, we have over the, over these last five years and certainly within this time Mallory has been with us have learned a lot about ways and better ways to, to collect, to, to, to collate, to, to analyze, to report all of our, of our metrics. And, and, and that means, and what we have learned has led to changes in a lot of cases in the ways and the methods that we've used to collect and to report a lot of these statistics. And what that means is that to, to compare them sometimes to, to metrics in previous years is not always going to be a very useful comparison, depending on what it is you want to use the comparison for. Because the numbers, again, because of the ways that we've improved the way we collect them really has made that, I think that comparison going back that far a bit less useful. We've also in recent years have collected statistics that for different categories, particularly those related to community engagement, that we, that we just weren't necessarily collecting or collecting in the same way in previous years. And so for some particular metrics, there just may not be a five-year comparison available. So when you, when we're able to, as Mallory works on this request, when we're able to show you that five-year comparison, it is going to be accompanied by a, by a lot of notes and annotations to indicate where we think comparisons to previous years might be a little bit problematic or where you might want to take some of that with a little bit of a grain of salt and be cautious about using that information for comparative purposes. And, and again, because also because of all of that, it is going to take a little bit of time to, to, for Mallory to get all of that together. So she anticipates that she's going to spend most of the rest of this calendar year working on that. And she expects to have that five-year comparison from 2015 to 2020 available to you in January. So I hope that, that satisfies. I hope that will work for all of you. But we'll, in the meantime, we'll continue to make these to every, every month to update this dashboard of core use statistics. So you can continue to see the progress of this year and comparisons to, and comparisons to last year. So that's, that's what I wanted to make sure I said about the core use statistics report. Before we move on to others, are there questions about that?
Hey, yes. Well, thanks to Mallory for taking this on. Couple of things from my end, I guess, if in those annotations, like everything you said is understandable. If just in those annotations about the ones we should not, we should take with a grain of salt. If they could put in why and what's changed and kind of what, what, yeah, basically just what's changed over the years and the way we collect that data.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And obviously that's, you know, it's a little troublesome for me to hear that because we made decisions based off that data naturally. So if it wasn't as accurate as we were thinking it was, it would be good to, good to know that sooner than January. And then also, yeah, just some of the, I know some of this data I had, well, I mean, I wasn't expecting this until January, the next time we got our, every six month.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
Was kind of, was kind of what I was expecting. So that, that's perfectly fine too. But just did have some concerns about what's changed in the collection of the data and just making sure that past policies, past things we put in place based off that data is still accurate. And if there's anything we need to review.
Yep. I think, I think, Christian, there's probably a little bit more information about that, those questions that we can probably share sooner. And then, yes, when, when you see that five-year report and you see those notes, there, there will be explanations in, in those cases where we think, you know, because of how we've improved the way we're collecting some of those, those statistics that, you know, what that change is, what it means and, and why it might be a little bit problematic to compare to earlier, to earlier. So we'll make, we'll make sure that all that's explained very clearly.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks again for taking it on. I will admit I didn't realize it was that big a project when I said it. So I do appreciate.
I know that's, we, I, I, when you, when you mentioned it, I, I wasn't that sure either, but after, after talking with Jody and Mallory, I realized that it was going to take a little bit of time to get it together. Um, so then we also, and, and again, Jody is on the line. And if you have specific questions about this report that I can't answer, I know she would be happy to because she's been living this information day in and day out for a while. But in May and June, we, we did a community satisfaction survey. And these, this dashboard shows the results of that, of that survey. And what I think are incredibly high levels of satisfaction in the community regarding, regarding our services, particularly as we have had to transition or had to transition so quickly to, to digital and virtual services and then slowly accommodate other services when it was a little bit safer to, to do so. So if you have questions, yeah, please ask and Jody can also jump on the call here. Okay.
Not hearing anything. I think we can.
All right. So then also the, and then finally the dashboard that you see here that provides the results of the July-August staff well-being survey. Again, a survey that Billy Treese worked to develop and administered to staff. A pretty high response rate from staff, 95 responses out of a total of 144 staff members. And you, you see the questions that were asked and, and the results there. So again, if you have specific questions or comments about it, I know Billy's on the call and would be happy to respond.
This is Ted Foss. I simply want to tell Jody and Billy and the other people what beautiful graphics you have. It all seems to work. When I go into the library, I see this font that is like the OPPL font. And I see these graphics and they're beautifully done.
Thanks, Ted. And, and I also want to make sure again that I mention Mallory Edgar because it's her, certainly a lot to do with her skill with Google Data Studio that we're able to now give you and show you these, these beautiful dashboards that very well, I think, sort of collate and present the, the information that we want to present.
I noticed that there was concern over enforcement of our statewide mask mandate. So I would like to hear about how we are actually going about enforcing it.
Sure. So, yes, there, there continue to be, to be concerns. I would say that the great majority of the people who are coming into our building are wearing masks and they are wearing them correctly and appropriately. And in, in cases where they may not be, maybe they have one and they're not, it's not applied completely over their mouth and nose or perhaps they've momentarily lowered it. When, when staff members see that and, and ask the, the patron to comply, most people are doing so without a problem. There are still a few occasions where people, particularly some patrons who are using computers may be repeatedly removing or lowering their masks. And there have even been a couple of occasions where we've had to ask patrons either to comply or to, or to leave the building. And I've made it clear to staff members that while we are not, while we are going to enforce those rules as much as we can, we're not going to turn to, to outside law enforcement to help us enforce it. And if there really is a problem, that staff members should feel free not to be around, to disengage, to pull back and not be near the person who is, who is not choosing to comply. Thankfully, and if you, if you Thankfully, and if you if you'd like to hear another member of the leadership team comment on this, that would be fine. Lori and Billy and Jeremy and others are on the call. Again, I think the great majority of the people, these patrons who are coming to the building are complying without any, without any problem. But you can, you know, you can imagine that even then, there continues to be a lot of anxiety among among everyone, including our staff, about working in a physical building and being around other people, even with all of the precautions and safeguards that were that we're taking. There is, you know, there's just nothing we can do to completely eliminate those, all of those anxieties. But again, we are, when it, when it comes specifically to the issue of masks, we are actively asking everyone to comply with that with that mandate.
If I can just jump in, I I had a similar question and comment. So thank you, David. You know, it it is a little bit of a, you know, we're in a double bind, right? Because in terms of enforcement, you could have more staff in to help enforce this, but then you'd be putting staff at risk, right?
Right, right.
But it's a, it's a tough problem in that, in that aspect. And, you know, I think I haven't actually, I still won't go to the library. I think like, well, I'm just going to put staff at risk, so I'm not going to go. I miss y'all. But I'm I'm assuming you guys have fabulous signage up. And and beyond that, it's it's just hard. And I, and we do have to mostly rely on patrons. The the question was raised kind of towards the bottom of this about the fact that perhaps hazard pay for part-time staff who are required to be in the building would be worth talking about, you know, sort of in that, in that sort of last section here with the biggest needs, wants and concerns. So I don't know that we need to address this now if it's going to be brought up in the next chunk of budget conversation. But if now is the right time, I'd love to hear David's thoughts on that or Billy's thoughts.
Well, we, the question, yeah, so we we worked to, as a leadership team, to to begin to respond to all of the staff concerns that were communicated through this survey. And and the pay and benefits part was certainly one that we're continuing to to talk about. For 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 the time, we are not, I'm not recommending hazard pay or bonuses for staff. But I'll ask Billy to just comment a little bit more specifically about the conversations we've had about that and 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 his thoughts and what what his recommendations about that have been.
And I forgot to say one thing I need to say, which is that at UIC, we had a presentation at the union from the SEIU, which is the service organization, the, you know, the custodial staff and the facilities workers, et cetera, their union. They've had two deaths so far and completely inadequate PPE there. So that's a little bit of my context coming into this. I'm glad to see from this that it seems like we've been able to keep up well with the PPE. And, you know, so if, you know, if we're confident that we're not putting staff at unreasonable risk, I'm probably okay. But it was, it was heartbreaking hearing from SEIU. It was really terrible, so.
Billy?
Yeah, Marianne, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think that that's something. You know, I think that we are going above and beyond for our staff and providing the the PPE, providing, providing for multiple ways to to work safely in our building. If a staff member is in an elevated risk category and they don't want to come into the building, we'll find them opportunities to work from home. If if a staff member isn't comfortable working with the public, we'll find them a way to work, or find them a way, a way to work behind the scenes or during or during hours when when the library isn't open, I'm sorry, when the library isn't open to the public. Right now, that's eight AM to ten AM in the morning and then six PM to eight PM at night. And also, we just recently introduced, working, actually, just just this week, introduced operating hours for on Sunday for staff only to be in the building from, I think it's twelve PM to six PM, to allow hours for work to happen where where the public are not in the building. So we're creating many ways for staff to work safely. And also, it's really responding to a lot of their concerns or fears. So that's, that's where I believe that we're going above and beyond. And that's where I feel like, I feel like I could also make an argument for hazard pay, but I don't feel that we're there right now. And I feel like I don't want to incentivize people trying to come into the building when maybe they shouldn't. So we're still being accommodating for for that. So any questions on that one?
No, that makes a lot of sense, Billy. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, and there's just one other thing I I want to say about about the the staff well-being survey report. You know, I I would, listening to staff and 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 working with them nonstop pretty well over the last five to six months now on this, I would categorize almost all of the concerns and anxieties that staff have really into general buckets. The first bucket is anxieties and concerns about their health and their well-being. And all of that, of course, is tied to being around other people, to working in a physical environment, to if they are at a high risk, being in a high-risk category, having access to the personal protective equipment and and other materials and equipment and supplies to keep them, to keep them safe. And the other bucket is their concerns and anxieties about their their finances and their and their jobs and their financial futures. I think that the the staff, the the leadership team, the management team, Jeremy and and so many others have done a tremendous job of of doing everything we possibly can if we're going to have people in the building at all, to making sure that we're providing a safe of physical environment as we as we possibly can. The the other bucket really is something that even more than me or the leadership team or Billy is really within the the scope of responsibility of the Board of Trustees. And by that, I mean, until, as as long as staff feel that their their jobs are not in jeopardy, that they will continue to be paid and and made whole. I think that, and that has continued to be the message so far, that that that, that those fears and anxieties are are laid. But staff also know that this this environment is going to continue for a very long time. And they also know that that could have an impact on the library's financial situation, on the library's revenue, on taxes. And so I I'm just, I'm just mentioning that, you know, that that part of this is also a big part of the fears and the anxieties and the concerns that that staff members have. So just something to to, I think, remember, even later this evening when we, when we begin talking about the the budget for for next year. Okay. And then the last document that we, that I included with staff reports again, was in response to some questions that that Christian and others had. And that was about the the demographics of our staff by by race and ethnicity and by gender by pay grade. And so this this two-chart document that, again, Billy developed after the last board meeting was included in your packet. And so you can see as of August twenty, what that, what that spread, the demographic spread is of staff by race and ethnicity and in gender across all of the eight pay grades that we that we have. So, Christian, I don't know if you or others had any any questions about this that you wanted to ask tonight.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Billy, for getting the data together. I appreciate it. And let me flip back screens here because I have it up here. So, yeah, it was good to see this breakdown, I think, as opposed to the way it was laid out last time. Gets kind of a better idea, I think, of where where we sit. So I think grades, grades one through three, I actually thought were actually, you know, pretty much reflect the community, as I kind of broke it down by numbers. Grade one through three pretty much reflect the community. Grade one through three is roughly about thirty-two thousand to, salaries range anywhere from about thirty-two thousand to fifty-one thousand, a little bit higher. And then once you look at grades five through eight, which is about roughly about forty-six thousand to one hundred thirteen thousand, I guess it's a little, is just a little concerning in terms of the lack of diversity in some of the upper management at the library. So that's why I appreciated seeing this breakdown because it it allows us to really focus on that, if that's a priority for the board, diversifying that upper, upper management staff, or at least the high, people who are getting paid more. I do want to acknowledge, you all told me before, that it's not necessarily always upper management staff. Some people have been working here for years and might be a higher in the pay scale. So I do remember that. But at least for the higher income workers, diversify the the higher levels of staff, I think, should be a priority based off of this data. As far as the gender breakdown, we, I think that's pretty much confirmed, kind of what we know about the library world. It's primarily female-dominated. But I'm, I would rely on the rest of the board to see if, you know, that that should be a priority, diversifying that. I'm, I'm not sure I'm open to a discussion around that. But those are my thoughts on the numbers. And thanks again for getting them together.
Thank you.
I basically agree. I think we're fine on gender. And, you know, we we know it's a general difficulty about race at the, at the upper levels or upper pay grades. So we should continue to have that conversation and strategize around it, I think. I think we're, I think we're on the same page there.
I I like just kind of along the same lines. So I was just curious as to what pay grades do we start seeing? Do we start expecting staff to have advanced degrees as qualifiers? For those, is that like six, seven and eight, or just like seven and eight? Because I feel like that, you know, should also, when we're looking at that, to kind of say, these are the areas where, you know, not just to say that we need to work on the diversity, but also are we limiting ourselves? And so I know we've made some changes in some hiring and reexamining whether or not in a, a master's degree in library science is required for certain, for everything. In the past, I know all the libraries are looking at that as well. But for some of those upper levels where traditionally we've had those things, you know, I don't know if we want to make that require, you know, you know, dictated a change to the staff, but I know we have started to look at that. And that's what, one of the things, to Christian's point, is I was looking at that and it jumped, that was my first thought, was which one of these are we? You know, is is it a factor of that pipeline that we've talked about in the past and the lack of diversity in in the graduate programs? And those things, and are we limiting ourselves in some ways there? Yeah, in some areas, it this kind of has to be, you know, I think there's an expectation, but definitely others.
So Billy, will you remind me some of the specifics on some of these grades? I I believe it's at grade six where, generally speaking, the the master's degree in library science begins to become more expected. Is that correct?
No, it's actually grade five. Grade five is a librarian grade. If you can, that's where there's a lot of diversity in our librarian positions or or librarian-like positions, or like our coordinator positions. So that's grade five. You know, up and down, like above, from grade four through grade eight, it could be a master's level or a bachelor's degree that's required, depending on what the position is. Two, two things that I want to note is if we would have looked at this last year, grade three and grade four would have been mostly all white. But over our, but but we have been trying to promote from within in promoting our our part-time grades, two and three employees, promoting them into full-time positions that are, I'm sorry, grades one and two employees, promoting them into grade three and four positions that are full-time, at a higher skill level and higher more responsibility in the organization. So I think that's, that's a win. It might not, you know, it might just be a small change, but we're going to keep making those changes. And we're going to keep questioning, you know, the qualifications for the positions before we post them. So, you know, grade seven is our management team level and grade eight is our leadership, leadership team level. So, and I, and I could have told you that those were all white before I got to this, before we did this chart here. But so, but I think we are making progress. And I think we'll continue to make that progress. And as long as we're continuing to question those qualifications before posting and promote from within, those strategies are going to pay off for us.
Thanks.
I also meant to say, I wanted to just note, right, in grade six, it's two positions, right? This is, you know, if, I would be a lot more concerned if there were five thousand positions here and we were seeing this distribution, right? Because, you know, if one of those grade six positions, someone retires, we hire someone black, suddenly, that whole line looks incredibly different, right? So it it does become harder to make the kinds of changes we're talking about when the numbers are so small at those higher levels, so.
Right, right. Thank you for pointing that out, Marianne. I mean, if you look at grades six, seven and eight, we are talking about eighteen, is it? Ten, sixteen, yeah, we're talking about eighteen people out of a staff of one hundred and forty-four. But I, that's not, I'm not making that as an excuse. I'm just pointing out that it's a, it's a very small number of people. And, you know, and even in grade eight, which is just the members of the leadership team excluding me, so the six members of the leadership team, at least three of those six, or I would say, three of those six positions do not require a master's degree in library science. They would, they require other advanced degrees or other advanced experience, such as the Director of Human Resources, the Director of Communications, and the Director of of Public Safety and Social Services. Those positions do not require the master's degree in library science. So that, and even in grade eight, that that degree is not an impediment to people stepping into into those positions. I would say a few other things. Number one, that is something I've said to the board before. And and I'm hopeful that this will be a theme that, or or a topic that gets discussed throughout our anti-racism work. And that is the idea of active recruiting in different ways for for positions that become available at at the library. In other words, searching for people to take positions at the library to become available that we do, using all of the old and traditional methods that we that we've used, are not necessarily, I would say, almost certainly not going to help us to to achieve greater diversity among among the staff. So we need to continue thinking about what does that kind of recruiting look like? I would also say that, you know, right now, we do not have people that are leaving their positions. So, you know, unless we make additional positions available, we don't have a lot of movement on on staff right now, of people leaving, leaving positions. But even then, we've continued to make, to adjust expectations and requirements for for different positions. One of the most recent was our promotion of Stephen Jackson to the manager of of Team Services. In previous years, and this was certainly the case when I first came to the library seven years ago, we would never have, I think, even considered giving a position of that level of that type. we would never have, I think, even considered giving a position of that level of that type to, uh, to a person who did not hold the master's degree in library science. And, um, and so we're, we're continuing to rethink our, our requirements for, for positions like that, so that we can, we can continue to, to achieve greater diversity. So I think, I mean, that's my way of saying that I think there are a lot of things, as Billy has pointed out, that we've done, a lot of things we still want to do, and a lot of, a lot of methods and a lot of ways that we can think about working to, to achieve what we want. But in the grades that, where most, the great majority of the numbers of our staff members live, I, I, I think you rightly noted that there is a, there is a, right now, a good deal of diversity, diversity there. So, thank you.
Thank you. A couple more things. So, I mean, I acknowledge that, yes, although it is a small number of people, they are the highest paid people in the organization and as a result get a large chunk of payroll, total payroll. And especially when we think about how the board is allocating our resources equitably, it's definitely something to note for us to keep our eye on. Second thing is, I feel like we've been talking about ways to recruit for a while now, back and forth. And I was just wondering, can we just, can I just request a report on, on uh, how we recruit diverse?
Well, right now, Stephen, uh, Stephen, have mercy, I'm sorry. Right now, Christian, we, we really don't. I would say that, um, what, what I want to do is to hear more about that from, from the anti-racism advisory team at the end of the year as it, as it completes its work. As I said, we, we, we have not had a great deal of movement of staff out of the organization in, uh, in these, in these upper grades for quite a while. I mean, the people that have these positions have had them for a long time. And so, you know, even, even recruiting that we would want to do, there, there, there hasn't been any because there, there haven't been positions at that level in the organization that are available. But, um, I mean, this is certainly something that, um, that we would want to, to have as a part of our anti-racism work and anti-racism journey. And I think something that we want to wait for, uh, for the, for the rest of this year to hear what Rashida and that, and that advisory team has to say about that.
Okay, yeah, that, I think that's fair. Thank you. Last thing was, I liked the, uh, the hiring from within piece and that we've been doing more of that later, lately to create some changes. Billy, do you see that as a trend, like we're going to try to continue to get people into the higher grades? Reason I'm asking is because I know we've made, uh, it a priority in the past few years to invest more in tuition reimbursement. And if that's something we continue, we want to continue to do and try to push people up into those levels, maybe that's something for the board to think about allocating more resources to, or something to that effect.
Yeah, yes. I know that every time we have an open position, regardless of the grade it's in, we're, we're thinking, is there a way? It, we, we, is this going to be an internal only posting? Is it going to be internal and external, external posting? And looking for ways to promote from, from within. I think the other point that's important to, when thinking about the grades, the majority of people in grades one, two, and a little bit of three, those are part-time positions. So it's not just about promoting them up to higher grades. It's also getting them into full-time positions that are eligible for full-time benefits, mainly health benefits. Because that's a, that's a, that's a concern of staff as well. You know, when you have sixty percent of your staff that don't have access to, to health benefits, even being able to, e- e- every time we have an open position, asking the question, how can we, do we have the ability to make this a full-time position? Can we combine this with another position? And, and those are the types of things we're looking to do. So not only moving them up in grades, but also moving them up from part-time to full-time status.
Thank you.
So, Matt, I think that's the, the end of staff reports, unless
I believe so.
There are more questions from anyone?
I'm not hearing any other questions right now, so I think we can move on to our financial reports. That will lead us into our July, just register.
You need me to try to?
No, no, I think, uh, did anybody have any questions about anything in the, in the distributions report? I'm not hearing any, so I don't know that we need to bring it up. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Christian, is there a second?
I'm muting Ted Foss, yes, second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? I'm hearing no further discussion. Ted, will you please call the roll call? Yay or nay?
Trustee Foss, yes. Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Going down the roll here. Just looking, trustee Fruth?
Yes.
Okay, I think I've got two more to go here. I'm just looking at my little thing. Mary Ann, are you there?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and, and we have Virginia.
Yeah.
And trustee Glavine is not here.
Okay, that, that report has been approved. Uh, we have our financial narrative and other financial statements.
And Jeremy is also on the call. So if you have questions about his financial narrative, he will be happy to answer them.
I do not have any questions. Mary Ann said in the chat she has none. Does Colleen, Ted or Christian have anything? Okay, uh, having, hearing no questions, we are ready to move on to additional reports. IGOV.
We did not have a meeting this month, is that right?
IGOV doesn't meet until September.
Council of Governments did meet. Since our last meeting, it was just an informational roundtable focusing a lot on the schools, uh, getting ready for their, their year to start off. David, do you have any other takeaways?
No, I do not.
Okay. ILA Legislative and Advocacy is scheduled to meet next Monday. So I have no addition, no information since our last monthly meeting. Friends of the Library.
Friends of the Library, the Board of Friends did meet this month. It was a fairly brief meeting. Uh, there wasn't a lot of business for them to consider. They did approve my request for assistance with the Barbara Ballinger lecture. They're going to, when it's time, give us a check for two thousand dollars to pay the stipend to to Claire Lombardo, our author that was selected for, for this year's lecture. Otherwise, um, they talked a bit about their, uh, their financial position and the fact that they have limited access to, uh, to additional revenue right now. But at the same time, they're not, uh, they're not spending any money either. So, um, their, their whole, overall, their financial position hasn't changed much since their last, since their last meeting. So that's about it.
All right. And we will go on to new business designation of branch space for school education support.
So I just wanted to continue this conversation, mostly because I think HEPSAB is still looking for a decision or consensus from the Board of Trustees on their original request, if it becomes necessary to use the Mays branch. So they've, they, you know, they've asked me to continue to, uh, to keep this, uh, on your, on your agenda. As you know, uh, with, uh, with the school District ninety-seven going to, uh, at least for most of the rest of this year, a virtual learning environment, HEPSAB is going to go into the school spaces themselves to provide the services there, the ways, in the ways that they've always done it. But they, they want to be prepared for the possibility that the schools, School District ninety-seven, might choose to introduce in-person instruction sometime this school year, which would mean their access to the physical spaces there would be, would be very limited because the schools would be using them for, for the physical distancing of the students and the, and the teachers. So with the, with the possibility that they would need additional space, they continue to look to other community organizations, including the library. So they, they just want to know from the board, and I, you know, haven't promised that you're ready to make a, a formal decision on, on that question yet or not, but they continue to ask whether the library is, it would be in a position they're willing to give them the Mays branch if they, this school year, if they need it. When you were considering that last month, there were some questions, a lot of questions from Colleen and from, uh, from Christian and others about liability and insurance. And, uh, and since then, Jeremy did some, had some conversations with our insurance broker and carrier. And, and from them learned that, uh, that it would be strongly recommended that we, uh, that we ask HEPSAB to provide a contract for service with, uh, with clearly outlined liability coverage of, I think, up to ten million dollars if we're going to give them the branch space to use for the kinds of purposes that they, that they wanted to use it. So they would, they would, they would recommend, and I, I, I think we would certainly be, be advised to go along with their, with their desire for, for us to, to get that, that kind of liability insurance coverage guaranteed from the organization, which HEPSAB has said, um, they don't anticipate that that would be a problem at all. They just want to, they want to know whether that's, that's something they need to get all their ducks in a row about. If, if, you know, if it's a possibility that the, that the library would let them use the space. So, you can, you know, concerning the liability issue, we would make sure of, for our carrier and our broker that, uh, that HEPSAB provided all of the, uh, all of the evidence and all of the certificates for the, for the liability insurance that our, our insurer would, would expect that they would, uh, that they would have. So, um, if you need more or want more information about that, I, Jeremy's on the call and he can answer more questions about that. But Matt, I, again, I don't know. I mean, it's on, it's on the agenda here for discussion. I, I don't know. I mean, what I heard from most of the board members, uh, last month, at least the more vocal ones, was that they, they had serious concerns about doing this at all, considering, uh, I think, particularly since HEPSAB is an organization that does, uh, that does charge for its, for its services. So. Pass it over to you for, for any?
I, I, I still have some reservations about it, you know, for the opening up our space for organization that that charges for, I understand they, we've partnered with them and other things in the past, but I, it's still, um, doesn't, I, I can't square that circle personally. But I'm open to hear, hearing other opinions from the board. I feel like it's a worthwhile discussion to have.
So Matt, this is Ted Foss, and HEPSAB does wonderful work, but I don't think we should pay for use for our space.
Colleen, I know you had some very strong opinions about this.
I do. Um, I have an additional question, which is, in the event that, let's say that our, let's, it's hard to even articulate, but let's pretend like there was a day that we were going to be able to open to the public and we had an outside organization utilizing these spaces. We would have to have that clearly laid out in contract that, you know, in the event that we felt comfortable as an organization opening up to the public, that they would no longer be entitled to that space.
Correct. Yes, we would, we would want to make sure that that is clearly described in a contract, yes.
I'm sorry, has HEPSAB said anything about looking at a way to provide services to that zero to twenty-five percent? The, the students that we were, were most worried about have, I, I know that, you know, we, we might not have the answers. They may be better equipped, but have they said anything to us about a way to adapt what they're doing to? To address that?
No, no, they, they have not. I mean, certainly not in the way that, that the equity team has. I mean, that's what the, the work that the equity team is going to be doing with the, with the tutoring and the after-school assistance, that is all about the zero to twenty-fifth percentile. But I do not, my, my knowledge of what HEPSAB does, um, that is not, where, while I'm sure that there are students in that, in that, in that category that they serve, that's not, they don't restrict or limit or focus necessarily on, on that, that demographic, if you will. They have not given any indications that, that they're necessarily going to consider changing their model or the way that they do it. I mean, if you, if you wanted me to go back to, uh, to Mary Beth Sheets and, and ask that specific question, I'd be happy to do that. But so far, they haven't given me any indication that that's what they're doing or planning to do.
I'm, I'm still very uncomfortable with people paying for the use of our space.
Sure, no, I, I get it, I get.
Yeah, we've, we've gone out of our way to make sure that that's not part of, of anything that we're doing.
Right.
And it's just something I'm still very, very uncomfortable with.
Yeah, I get that, for sure.
And, and I wasn't at last month's thing, so I wasn't able to weigh in, but I, I, I think I generally, I think I generally agree on that. I, I, I'm still open to the idea of something where if HEPSAB came to us, let's, let's say we go back to a hybrid model, the, they're kicked out of the schools, presumably the need would, to some extent, drop at that point because some of the kids would be in school, um, in the physical building at that point, right? So, um, if they, if at that point, they are still short of space and wanted to come back to us and say, okay, we have thirty kids that we still would like to accommodate and we don't have space, you know, it might be worth having a conversation then about like, well, are there, you know, are there, are, could the library fund scholarship and space for, you know, some, something so those families that we were supporting would not be charged in using the space? It seems a little complicated and I, I'm frankly mostly hoping it doesn't come to that. But I, I sort of don't want to like say absolutely no to them either. I, I, I'd like to retain some flexibility depending on, you know, what the needs of the community might be in three months are, are very hard to predict, I feel.
Point taken. Um, Christian, do you have any thoughts you want to share at this time?
Um, no, no, I mean, I said I was going to go with what the parents thought and I, I meant it. So, I mean, I, I, I agree, I share, I share the reservations. And so, um, I, I think, um, yeah, I, I agree.
So, Matt, so at this, at this stage then, um, I'm not sure, I, well, I, so I don't have a, a clear yes or no answer for, for Mary Beth and the organization. Is there any message from that you want me to convey at this stage? I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, they're, I mean, again, they're, they're, they're basically trying to plan for the eventuality. It's, they don't know what's going to happen. They don't know what decisions District ninety-seven may make later this year or next term. So they're just trying to plan. And if, if our answer is that the only way that, uh, that the library organization thinks it would want to make our Uh thinks it would want to make our space available is if that space were available to people who did not have to pay for the service. I mean, that that answer alone may be, may be enough to to tell Mary Beth that. That that a partnership between the library and her organization is just not going to work. On the other hand, if I say it that to her that clearly. That we cannot, that we're not, the board is not prepared to give them space. That for which people, families would have to pay for a service. Um she might propose something else on her own, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if they, I think that's, I, from what I'm hearing from the other trustees, that's. That's the the message I think would be fair to communicate at this time would be. That the sense of that I am hearing from the the other trustees is that we are not comfortable. At this time with a proposal that would result, that would require people to pay for the use of our space.
And yes, man, I I confirm that.
Okay, well, that, I mean, that that's clear to me, so that gives me something I can at least go back and and have a conversation with her about. Then, uh you know, next month, I can tell you how, you know, she responds to that. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
David, if she does have ideas, I think, I think it would be great for us to hear them.
Sure.
And for no other reason than to be better prepared later when this question does come up in sixty, ninety, hundred and twenty days, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure, no, I I'll 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 present it that way and uh and have that conversation with her, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Great, all right. Um so then the next item is uh back to the the proposed vacation policy revision. Um so we, again, we, this is unchanged from from last month. We have the the policy as it's as it's proposed in revision, I have a copy of the policy as it exists now. And then, more importantly, I think we have uh this document that, again, uh Billy. Uh developed after a conversation with me and Jeremy to answer some questions that trustees had. About uh the the proposed revisions to the vacation policy. So I'm pretty sure that this might be where a lot of you have maybe focused your attention. Um before you even talk about that, though, I do wanna say, and I mentioned this in my narrative, that we. Uh leadership team, we considered its um its request uh to the board to uh to extend. Uh the vacation, this year's vacation time benefit into the next calendar year. Um in favoring instead to continue working with staff to make sure that this year. They have ample opportunities and flexibility. Uh to take their vacation time, to be encouraged to take their vacation time. Uh and to uh and to use it for their for their own well-being. So we've we've withdrawn the 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 additional request that we had from last month. And are just focusing on the changes to the vacation policy. So uh again, uh this response to some of the questions that you had, Billy developed, he's still on the call. So I'll uh let you ask any questions uh or make any comments about this that you've got.
So Billy, why is this a good plan?
It's a, it's a just plan, it it allows more time off for more of our part-time staff. Um and allows for more carryover for our part-time staff. Um and uh and that's one of the reasons why we pulled back that request. For additional rollover vacation time. Um because the focus needs to be on this policy and 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 doing more for our part-time staff.
Thank you.
Other questions? Or comments?
Um thanks for getting it together. Uh Billy, I appreciate it. Um as I, I guess as I thought more about it, I just think we need to have this conversation. Uh in our larger budget talks over the next couple of months um at uh before we make a decision on it. So I just think, yeah, we need to decide what we're gonna do is, yeah. Don't need to repeat myself, so yes.
Great. Well, that's, that's coming up. Any other, any other questions? Okay, well, it uh Matt, then it it sounds like the board might be in favor of tabling this again. Until we have a more of a conversation about the budget for next year.
I agree, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm not ready to vote on this.
Okay, very good. Then we will, we can move on then, if you if you're ready to uh discussion about the budget.
Yes, let's move on.
All right, great. Wonderful, so uh as we have, I'm just, I'm gonna give you a just a a general overview of what we're. What we're presenting tonight and what we're talking about. Uh and what the, what we expect the progression to be, and then I'm gonna let Jeremy sort of take it from there. Um so as we have now for the last several years, we're gonna present drafts of the budget. Uh most likely ever increasing uh specific drafts of a budget for next fiscal year. In stages, beginning this month and then continuing into September and then into October. And then even if if necessary into into November. Um we would, we would need to uh to make a final decision and take a final vote on a budget. And a levy resolution uh for next fiscal year, no later than the November meeting. So that we could present all of that to the to the village of Oak Park for them to use in their uh their budget appropriation and levy. Uh ordinances. Um so just as we have in in previous years now, we're gonna take this in stages. So that we can uh take time to consider all of it. And in the first conversation, we're focusing on uh on revenue and revenue projections. And we're focusing on uh the uh. Major categories of spending, specifically spending for all of human capital, which is the great majority. Of of our of our expenditures uh for physical capital projects. And how all of those things and how we project all of those things, depending on your decisions. Uh would affect the library's uh fund balance and financial and financial position. So uh to have that conversation, which I'm gonna let Jeremy begin to lead you through. We have this budget uh discussion worksheet with um. A with projections of uh increases in the library's levy of zero, one, two, and three percent. Uh based on a request from the board uh last month to see those different uh different projections. Uh we have a document uh specifically about uh expenses for human capital. That focus also, uh especially on the objective that we've had. To uh increase pay equity for staff. And if we wanted to continue a commitment to that priority. What that would require in terms of revenue. And then uh a look again at uh capital projects planned. Including uh some that have have already actually been completed. So uh Jeremy, uh will you uh take the board through uh this discussion as you prepare here in this document?
Yes, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so just kinda start, you know, you you see along the left there, and we have the revenues. Those are the standard revenue lines that we have. We did adjust some of those, looking at uh the property taxes at the top there. So nine, two, seven, one, two, three, nine, that's the amount of tax levy that we asked for for this current year. Um minus any of the uh debt levy. Okay, so that's the nine, two, seven, one, two, three, nine. Now, the other revenue streams there, those are estimates that I put together, looking at where we're at at this point in the year. And looking at really since March and how those revenue streams have pretty much dried up. I'm including the interest rates, and if you see in the the financial summary, you'll see how low the interest rates are. Are these days, I'm sure we all know that, right? Um so the revenue streams are are dropping off. Then as you see the expenses, as David mentioned, these are just the large groups of of expenses, so we don't have the details in there. And along those numbers, so you'll see under estimated fiscal year twenty twenty ending. The human capital, seven, two, nine, eight, six, two, eight. That represents seventy-six percent of the expenses that we have. So that's what those numbers, the percentages, just to the right of that column are. Um so then below that, you'll see the deficit. Um shows a hundred thousand dollar deficit this year. By my estimations, this year, we're gonna be um about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars short. From the expected revenue streams because of those uh other revenue streams besides property taxes. Um the corporate property replacement taxes, those, we are seeing some information coming that um. That's gonna be down about seventeen percent as well, so that's why I adjusted that down a little lower as well. So this year, that's where the the operating deficit comes into play. And then the capital expenses, this is um uh, I think the estimate that I have in in the um. The capital projects list is three hundred and eighty thousand, something like that, but I estimate it a little high. So as we go in, we can get more precise on that as well. But now that's, if the the board is comfortable moving forward with all of those capital projects. That we said, um these were the ones that we said were more high priority. And then you'll see the the deficit, five hundred um thousand on that. So there is a deficit this year. Going into next year then, and in the second column, you'll see, go up to the highlighted percentages. Towards the top of the page in yellow, you'll see the zero, one, two, three percents. So those are basically just straight percentages running right across those columns from the numbers from this year. And so you'll see if we had zero percent in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the levy would be nine million, two, seventy-one, two, thirty-nine. And so on. Um so as those go down, you'll see the amounts, um the deficits actually increase because. We have, um because we're in a deficit and they're just our straight percentages, right? So don't be set aside by that. So that's kinda overview what this, what this uh spreadsheet does. The other part of that, if you look on along the top, highlighted in orange. You'll see um the decrease from total fiscal year twenty twenty budget, ten, three, forty-two, oh, four, six. The ten, three, forty-two, oh, four, six, that's the amount levied with the the debt levy included in that. And so then as you go along the right there, you'll see on the first column where we would. You know, if the board said we're one, zero percent increase. The taxpayers would see a ten point three five percent decrease in the total levy, including the tax debt if we foregone. If the debt levy was foregone. And then if it was a three percent increase this year, um going into next year for the tax. The um taxpayers would see a seven point six seven percent decrease in the total taxes for the libraries. Because of that debt uh being ending. So that's kinda the overview of this. Now, there's a couple of things, if I can share with you, um let me get over there. I'd like to share the this total spreadsheet that I'm looking at. Oh, I don't have access to that to share.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll give you access, Jeremy, hold on. Okay, try it now.
All right, so you see um the full spreadsheet here, Oak Park Public Library fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Uh and then let me get my cursor back over. So this column here in F two, uh there's a cell in F two is one point zero three. So that represents a three percent increase in the revenue streams. The other thing I did with this spreadsheet, which I just did today, thinking about it, is I also set up a separate. Um cell here in F twenty-eight, which represents a three percent increase in the expenditures or expenses. So that basically gives us some flexibility, once we we're, we know where the board feels is appropriate to move forward. Kinda zeroing in on that, we can make adjustments in that. And so I'll I'll just show you here, for example, if we had um. A three percent increase this year, and we were gonna do a one percent increase, kind of as a pool on our expenditures. You'll see all of these numbers here in this area here will balance out. This line here is looking at our unassigned fund balance at the beginning of the year. Plus all the revenue stream, minus all the expenditures, and then looking at the target number for our um. Unappropriate, uh unassigned funds, that should be unassigned funds there. Uh so that's kind of our balance there, and the target is forty-two percent. Okay, so that's kinda where we're at with this spreadsheet, looking at, once we get an idea. Where the the board feels comfortable moving forward. So now with a three percent increase in in the tax levy. And looking at the sort of diminished revenue streams that we have. And then kind of a general overview of three percent on expenses. You'll see on row six, as we get to twenty twenty-three, this drops down to thirty-nine percent. And then twenty-seven percent, twenty-one fifteen, again, the target here is forty-two percent. So that would give us a little time to figure out, okay, do we need to increase revenue? Or decrease expenses to balance the budget long-term? I think, Christian, you mentioned it um at the last uh board meeting about. You know, being comfortable dipping into that that unassigned fund balance, and that is what it, that it's what's for. Currently, we have more than our target goal, so that gives us the room twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to kinda balance that out. Then as you get into twenty twenty-three, we would be at thirty-nine percent, that's still within the range per policy. But it's getting below that forty-two percent that we targeted. So that's just kind of an idea of where we're, what we're looking at with this now. Figuring out, going back, let me release that, so you can go back to the other document. On the page here, okay, so David, if you wanna go ahead and share that year. That page seventy-nine, or I can if you if you don't have it. But basically, what that, what that is, is looking at, you know, we have the, you can see that we have a couple of years because we have. Uh excess in unassigned funds currently. That gives us a couple of years to balance the budget moving forward, to make sure that it's sustainable long-term. Um so now you can go back to this document and look at the zero, one, two, three percents. To get an idea of where you're comfortable, um basically, what you're comfortable asking the taxpayers. For to run the library and meet all those strategic objectives that we were working on over the past years. And then curly, as the board, you know, what are the priorities for the board moving forward? Just to note, most of those numbers, the expenses and things like that are flat three percent. One thing that is not, if I'm, if I'm sure that there's not gonna be a flat percentage to it. I will put that number in, so that's adjusted for that, for example, insurance, which going into next year. Um the, it's expected to be forty to sixty percent increase, and so that is part of that budget. That's a hard number I put in there, because it's gonna go up to about, I'm estimating about a hundred thousand dollars, just for our liability property and casualty. And that is nationwide through our our broker, um that they ju, they're just seeing so many different um claims. That you're trying to recover that. So those things are in that. Um the other part of that is looking at the pay equity and the human resources. The capital, human capital lines. That for uh moving forward. Um is in the two to three percent range to balance that out. So keep that in mind as we're looking at these numbers, in order to keep everything else balanced. With the percentage of total expenses that human capital is taking part of, that sort of um. That um, I guess that's the only way to say it, right, the percentage of that total, that is human capital. Um that's kind of the range to keep all of that, the pay equity in those things moving forward. As the board was moving forward with that.
Just to uh, just to.
Just to just to say that, what Jeremy just said in different words, and if Billy wants to make a comment, I would welcome his to. What, again, in other words, what Jeremy is saying is that for the last several years, the the board has had an objective, a clearly communicated objective regarding pay equity and making progress on that. And what what Jeremy and what Billy is saying in this particular spreadsheet is that in order to continue doing that into twenty twenty one, we would need to have, we would need to commit to at least a two point six percent increase in the library's revenue through taxation. In other words, the library's levy. Anything less than that, and we would not be able to continue to to keep up with with that that objective. And Billy, if you want to reiterate that in a different way or or correct anything I'm saying, please, go ahead.
I would just like to say on that, too, and sorry to cut you off, Billy, the that two point six percent, we could maintain that for a year or so moving forward and see where we're at in, you know, twenty twenty two. The only difference is is that would basically then we would be looking at where do we cut elsewhere to make up for that difference? Does that make sense? So it doesn't have to, everything doesn't have to increase two point six percent for that budget line to increase to point six percent. But it would have to come from somewhere if it's not from the tax revenue. Now, also, keep in mind, in two or three years, we expect those revenue streams to come back. And then we can be capture that, I think, in next year. I expect four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars to be short because of those diminished revenue streams, which is four and a half percent of our total revenue. Twenty twenty two, hopefully, that will come back, and we'll see some of those revenue streams coming back. Like the the parking lot and, you know, the the room rentals and things like that. So it's a matter of where we're at moving forward through this period where of diminished revenue. All right. Thanks, Billy.
Thanks, Jeremy. Go ahead, Billy.
Actually, I didn't have much else to add. I David, I think you said it very clearly. What I what I would add here is, and the assumption that's really key that you should know is that like this line's going up two point six percent, but that assumes that we're not adding any any additional staff or their dependents to be covered by our medical plan. You know, that to me is that it a budget is a statement of priorities. And I feel like you can do wage equity, you can do offering more health insurance to more of our staff, getting more access to pension benefits. But all of those things are going to going to cost money. It's like, well, where do you want the money to to come out of? All three of those buckets? None of those buckets, a mixture of them. So that that's where I need some help kind of sorting through. This is just I put this together as kind of like a rough estimate of what what realistically we could we could work with without impacting a lot of our strategies.
Thanks, Billy.
So this is Ted. I'm I was just listening to Jeremy's story, and of course, we don't have the TIF anymore. And there was a seven point three percent less, the ten percent less, and the two point six more. And I'm sorry, what do we tell the taxpayers if any of us is going to run for office again to say, how are we decreasing the library's budget?
So can I can I jump in there? I don't know if I want to run for office again. I'm I'm perfectly okay with raising taxes generally and then running for office and making the argument for why they should elect me anyway. But in this particular case, I think, you know, I I do feel a certain desire to provide tax relief, if possible, in a time when so many people are facing unemployment, when Congress is being very unclear on what's happening with stimulus funding, et cetera, so on, right? So so my 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 normal impulses are maybe being mitigated by pandemic. The library, of course, is a is generally a very small portion of most people's household budgets. So, you know, if we it will it will impact people, but it it won't impact very many people dramatically, especially given that, you know, for the most part, the people paying property tax directly are homeowners, the people, you know, fifty percent of Oak Parkers are in multi unit housing. And for the most part, my understanding is that the rental market actually is not rental rental, like apartment pricing is mostly determined by sort of availability and what the market will bear rather than property taxes, which surprised me. And that was something that I learned about a couple of years ago after being elected and having big conversations with the village trustees at the time. So, you know, when we talk about providing relief, I think it's it's important to keep in mind that it's sort of a balancing of like, well, for the most part, what we would we would be doing would be decreasing a little bit of the the cost to people who are probably in the, you know, upper seventy five percent of the village economically. And weighing that again, the tremendous of the library, we all know libraries are so much more utilized and more needed during economically difficult times, especially by the lowest income marginalized population. So I guess I just wanted to put all of that framing out there. If we do decide to do something like reduce how much we ask from the village, from the sorry, from the taxpayers or or look at cuts. I I would, the main thing I want to say, I think, is that I think the priority should be to protect staffing and staff pay, even if that means, you know, maybe we end up freezing all nonessential purchases because I would argue it's a lot harder to replace good staff than replace books or magazine subscriptions or whatever other things we spend money on furniture, you know, whatever. And and budgets are moral documents, and being decent to our staff is the right thing to do, especially in a pandemic. And last thing I'll say, and then I'll I'll shut up. But I I also think that dipping a little below forty two percent fund balance seems reasonable to me and into disaster. That's essentially what the fund balance is for. It's dipping down for too long or too far becomes a concern. And so, you know, that that year where it goes to thirty nine percent, I'm okay with that. Twenty seven percent is worrisome, fifteen percent is very worrisome, right? Because you can, in fact, get successive disasters, as terrible as that is to say. So so that's my that's my framing, and I will let others talk now.
Yes, I think one of the issues, I think, for us is, you know, we're at an opportunity where we can provide relief to the taxpayers at the same time as well as we shore up our services and continue to maintain our staffing. I think it's a it, we are in a we are in a unique situation where, at the same time, you know, it's we are not are certain, the way we provide services and and programs is changing and and yet not in other ways, and this and the community is still looking to us for resources and support in a in a way that, David, I'm sure you saw in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and ten during that economic downturn of and wherever library you were at during those years, we saw here public pressure for us to reduce our our loving. I think one year we did freeze at a zero percent love you change for that. At the same time, we were seeing increased demand on certain areas of our service and our staff. That demand has changed now. We are not seeing people walk in to the building in and looking at our staff for help in the same ways, because they just they're just not coming in physically, but we are seeing. And we saw the report, the digital services, and those will those and those cost money and time for our staff to manage in in a different way than the, you know, being in the physical space. So I'm not saying I, you know, I'm not in of the mindset that we be at zero. I feel comfortable at this time going with a two or three, two or three percent operating thing, you know, nor knowing that we will be, you know, returning a great deal of our the the amount of levy that we have been collecting back to the community. I just want to make sure that as we're going through this, we're thinking about responsibly because there will be a next year's budget where we have to, where the board will have to look at, and whatever number we decide now will be the starting point in a year from now.
Right.
These things do compound. And so I I don't want us to feel like we have, you know, a broad path to walk. We I think we need to still be mindful of how we proceed forward with this and while we know basically anything we do short of capturing all of it will return some money to the taxpayers. I don't want us to get carried away with that level of comfort because in a year, again, we'll be
That's a one year, that's a one year thing, right? I mean, this this is the year that the that the debt is finally and formally retired, which mean, and that's the only reason, obviously, that you could you could have a three percent increase in the budget, but still have a seven and a half percent decrease in the levy request because because the great majority of that of that bond debt is is, as you said, that being returned. But that's a one time, that's a one time thing, right? And once you've done that, you don't, you don't do it again. So you're absolutely right. It's it's the the decision that you make this year is is doubly important because of that specific fact. What you do this year will have a a significant impact on what you are able to do next year and and the year after that. Jeremy, was there any other elaboration you wanted to make about the about the effect on the on the fund balance? Or do you do you feel like you complete, you know, explain that as much as you wanted to?
David, I think I think
This is Ted Foskett. Thank you so much, because it is a one time thing we have now.
Right.
You know, and I think going looking back at like last year and the response that the handful of the the residents had with the TIF district, I think, in hindsight, that was a wise move to to move forward with that in with the situation that we're in now. And, you know, as has been said before, this is a one time thing, not how that's received and how that's moved. You know, we can only anticipate that. The other part of this, too, is looking at the capital expenditures. So some of these are kind of broad just kind of estimates. You'll see in in the this document here, it shows three hundred and eighty three for the rest of this year. Those were the high priority projects that we had looking forward. Going in forward into next year, if you recall last fall, when we were talking about the budget, we had items in the long term budget projections of everything from three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, starting in twenty twenty three, I think it was, to start putting money away for HVAC system in twenty thirty three. Because the the estimate is like six point five million or something like that. So the five hundred thousand dollar range in in policy, it mentions about a target of ten percent of our unassigned our our general fund as for capital. So the five hundred thousand is kind of a conservative estimate on that as well. It looks like from the projects that we have slated moving forward over the next four or five years, that that five hundred thousand dollar range is a pretty good average moving forward. So that's something to to keep in mind, too. There's a lot that that the board and staff can do within this full budget to make sure that it's balanced long term and sustainable. But it's just looking at what's what are the different scenarios that we have? What's going to position the library to make sure that it meets, that the board gets to move forward with the high priority strategy initiatives that you're working on, but then also the the regular operating and how we manage that going forward. So if you have any questions on that, it's there's a lot of moving parts in it at this point. But do let me know if something's not clear or you need more information.
Jeremy, would you be able to share that Excel spreadsheet you were playing around with earlier?
Sure.
Can you share that with us? I'd like to play around with some of the numbers. So I I agree with a lot of what's been said. It's something I think I I have to kind of think about just because the implications. Just the implications of it year over year kind of concern me. I mean, I it's something I know I've been thinking a lot about and try trying to create staff pay equity is important to me, but in the midst of a pandemic, I just, I just wonder what the what the best course of action is. I certainly think we should invest in the staff if we're going to invest anywhere, but I guess something that would be helpful for me is, as a board member, I don't necessarily know some of the nitty gritty details of the budget line items. And so I'm certainly not suggesting that there's any waste in the budget or anything like that, but it'll be helpful to me, like Jeremy, in your opinion, David, in your opinion, area areas that if they, you know, that we could cut in a COVID environment that aren't going to affect the day to day operations of the library. You don't have to have those all tonight. I mean, maybe you do off the top of your head, but that's something that would be helpful if that even exists.
Well, I to that point, there there is one thing, and and please don't laugh at me, but there's one thing I want to I want to mention that has just very recently happened. And that is news that the Evanston Public Library has their board has has acted to permanently close two of the library systems branches. They've done that specifically in response to the pandemic and in response to the financial crisis that the pandemic has created and is expected to continue to create. So to be clear, that's not a temporary closure of those branches. That was a decision to permanently close them in favor of consolidating resources as, and these are their words, consolidating resources to provide library services to the entire community in a much more equitable equitable way. They've determined that they can do that best by closing those branches and reallocating those resources. So I say that because we have two branches in Oak Park, and we do not know when those branches are going to be able to be open again for service. I don't expect them, I don't anticipate recommending that they be open again anytime soon. But I also know from serving here for the past seven plus years, that the idea of 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 closing, or even the suggestion that either of the branches might be closed has has been a very, very unpopular idea. But I mentioned to you because this is this is a decision that would that has just been made by a library that is our peer in many ways and that approaches services and approaches priority and approaches the issue of equity in ways that are very, very similar to ours. It may be one of the other than the Skokie Public Library, maybe one of the libraries that is up here that is closer to us than any other library, public library of our size in the Chicago area. So I'm just I'm just mentioning that to give you something additionally to think about.
In that scenario, did they also lay off staff that worked at those two branches?
Uh, I, I haven't looked at the uh, at the, that information that carefully, but I could certainly get that information. My suspicion is that um, that they have probably uh, jettisoned some positions. But I, I, I can't answer that right now. All I know is that they have decided permanently to close two of their branches.
No, that, that's really helpful and I, I'm not sure I would have known that unless I had seen the headline. So that type of stuff would be helpful. If you, if you have a few of those.
Sure.
To share.
Yep. And I think that, you know, when, when Jeremy shares the full spreadsheet and you can see all of the line items. I mean, we're happy to go into detail, into greater detail. I mean, I think most of those lines are, are going to be pretty self-evident or self-explanatory, but. We can give you as much information as we possibly can about what is actually. Included in the expenditures of each of those lines, but. Again, I just remind you that after you get beyond human capital, after you get beyond wages, salaries and benefits. Everything else, everything else. Is including collections, including insurance, including fixed costs. All, everything else is probably less than twenty-five percent of the entire operating budget.
Right, but we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars. You know, that can make, that can make some difference, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Just to be clear, did.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jeremy.
All the board want the spreadsheet or just to, to Christian?
Well, I think you should give it to everyone. Yeah, I think you should get it.
Yeah, and Christian, just on the, on the smaller items, just one thing that we do have talked about is um. The furniture replacement line. That is going to be way under budget this year. Um, so we're looking at what it would, you know, where we best use those funds. Moving forward, but that's a line, for example, because we did clear everything off. We're not going to be replacing any furniture this year. So there are some other things that, you know, we're seeing balances on some of that. Just not sufficiently to cover the revenue.
Presumably you had some increased costs due to PPE, et cetera, kinds of things as well, right?
Oh, yes. Yes, yeah, for sure.
Would it be possible for us to look, and this, this will probably be down the road a little bit. But look at what we anticipate our digital and virtual costs to be. Once the school year starts rolling, because I, I know, you know, we've seen some information on what it looks like now. But as the school year starts picking up, I anticipate there's going to be another ramp up. In everybody's needs of, you know, hotspots and expertise. And I agree with a lot of what, what everybody else has said, but I, I think. In, in this next year, in this next fiscal year. We need to concentrate on the two things that are the most valuable for the community, and that is. Our access and accessibility and our expertise. I think expertise is something we're all behind. I think the next piece that I would really like some more information on is. What is the cost of accessing that expertise? What is the cost of access? We, we know that physical materials are not. Being used at the, at the same rate that they were beforehand. And if we anticipate. This next fiscal year being more in line with what we've seen the last six months. How is that going to shift our budget so that we can, we can plan accordingly? The last thing I want to do is. Keep line items the same in anticipation that we will be going back to the old normal. When, you know, as we heard from our three, our three experts today, there are some things that they want to keep. From the changes that we've made. So I'd like to see. Where, where the money is going for those items. So that we can reevaluate as we move towards new normal later, whatever form that takes. We, we have a better grasp of what our virtual costs are.
Yeah, no, thank you, Virginia. I think, yeah, I, I hear that loud and clear. I think that we have seen, we are seeing, what we're seeing now is a, is going to become a, a, I think in some ways a permanent shift. In the ways that people are using libraries and library services and. Resources that we have at least now temporarily reallocated. To digital and virtual materials and digital and virtual services. Uh, will more, most likely become a, a part of our, our normal way of operating moving forward. So, you know, in, in this, in this time of the, of the pandemic. Shifts that we've made to commit more, with more of our materials, resources. To digital and virtual materials rather than traditional print materials. We can, we can, we can certainly talk about what we, what we expect or what we would recommend. That, that expenditure to look like for the rest of this year and into, and into next year as we get more specific about the budget. But then, then yes, also thinking about and projecting. What, uh, what the future, even, even, you know, post height of the pandemic looks like. Uh, in terms of how people have now come to expect to use the library and expect to use library services. And, and, and what that looks like in terms of a, of a continuing maybe shift or reallocation of, of resources. So um, I, I think that as we, you know, we, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can we also get from you a little information on? At work, I would call it recoding, but how we're recoding. Those line items, you know, something that may have been part of. I don't know, children's services that's now digital. Are we reallocating those funds under a line that we would? Previously have denoted only as like digital, virtual type items? Or are we going to start, since it's, since it's overarching, are we going to start branching out some of those digital dollars? To different departments, just so that we have an idea of. Now that things are maybe crossing into more than one traditional category. That we have an understanding of where they're going.
Yeah, so I'm, I will bring, as we, as we continue working on the next uh, draft of the budget, then the one after that, we'll, we'll certainly bring. Some of the managers, particularly Barbara Fitzgerald, uh, into that conversation. Uh, and talk about not only, you know, how we're, how we're spending the money, obviously, but then how we're, how we're, how we're. Revealing that information and the way we, we present the budget. You know, generally speaking, we talk about library materials. We're talking about uh, not just print materials, but all materials, including digital materials. Uh, but if what you're, what you're asking is for uh, more specificity and, and, and more of a delineation between. Digital materials and, and more traditional print materials. We can, we can, you know, we can talk about and work toward providing more of that, of that breakdown, if that's what you want to see. But I, I want to be, I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly.
Yes, please. Well, you know, it seems like, you know, they were talking about, we used to have story time. In the building, now we're having story time outside the building. Has that created some sort of cost shift? Things like that, just so that, you know, we make sure. When we're looking at where we're putting money, that we're putting it. Where we're supposed to and we're taking those things into account wherever, wherever they fall.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We can, we can have a, I can have a conversation with a, with a leadership team about what that, what that looks like. And again, I, I would say that. You know, whatever that, that shift entails or whatever that shift includes. Again, the, 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 the great majority of what we're spending to provide those kinds of programs, whether they're. Programs that people come into the building and participate in person. Or whether they're programs that uh, that uh, people participate in virtually. You know, the, what we're, what we're really talking about is mostly what we're paying people, what we're paying our staff to, to provide that. That's always going to be where the, you know, most of that money is being spent. It doesn't matter whether a staff member is spending time preparing a. Preparing for a program in person or whether they're doing it virtually. It's, it's the time. Uh, that they're taking and, and what that resource is costing first and foremost. But, you know, we can, we can, from there, we can certainly talk about what, what does that cost look like? Uh, and how different might it be if we're talking about doing something in person in a building rather than doing it virtually?
Can I just comment on that too, Virginia? The um. In the financial summary each month, one of the things that I, I try to do is any of the. The variances that are significant, whether it's under expended or, or over are noted in there. So I try to give the board um, enough information to see what's going on with it and give you a heads up if. If it's looking at the, the overall budget line is going to be over, under. For example, and, and in this packet on page sixty-nine, it talks about the expenses of the work from home pay. And that budget line is five hundred and ninety-eight percent over the expected budget. But overall, it's a small portion of the budget and it's not going to affect the overall budget of that. So I do note some of that and in the previous um. Summaries, uh, I didn't include it in, in this month. But, you know, we talked about the hoopla and canopy and some of the other. Cost per item, cost per use services, digital services that we increased. And some of those costs are shifting. And so. Some of that's kind of buried in there. If it's something that's going to impact the overall budget. It should be noted in there. If you have questions, you know, feel free to let me know on that too. But some of those, I think some of the, the questions that you have are in there. Maybe get it just kind of buried in there unless it's significant, in which case I should flag it for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Matt, uh, where, where do you feel like we are at this point in the conversation?
Yeah, that's a. That's a good question because I'm trying to think about like where, you know, the kind of what I'm hearing from everyone else about like the direction I wish to proceed. Moving forward.
A, a, again, from my perspective, you know, to, to continue to make progress each month now as we, as we work toward a final budget. Toward the end of the year. It would, it would be helpful uh, tonight, at least to have uh, some kind of a general consensus. On, on where the board thinks it wants to go regarding uh. Uh, regarding a percentage revenue uh, increase. Because that's going to tell us, uh, you know. More specifically, what, what we need to show you in the next draft and then, and then potentially the draft after that. In other words, it, it'll be challenging to give you anything much more specific. Next month unless we have at, at least a general idea of, of the uh, of the direction you want to go and. If, if that's not a final determination of what the percentage is, it may be, maybe just a, a little bit more of a, of a narrow. Gap or range to, to kind of consider and, and work with. In other words, if you, is next month, if you still want to see. A couple of different options, maybe it's not four, maybe it's, you know, maybe it's two. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Is there any, is everyone else comfortable with getting like a? Two percent and a three percent. Version of it, or do you want to see like a one percent and a three percent? Kind of in there. Uh, I feel like I would, I personally would feel like I'd like to see two. Two options as we're moving forward with some of these numbers. But I don't, I don't want to speak for everyone else if there is a. I, you know, enough, enough folks who want to see a different number than what I want to see personally.
I'd like to see a one percent and a three percent. To see if, I don't even know if that's possible.
That's possible, for sure.
Christian, does that sound good to you? I'm seeing a head nod.
I agree with the, yeah, one percent and three percent. Uh, so it sounds like one, two and three percent.
Uh, no, just one and three. I think, because I think we can mentally split the difference between, between them. Or, you know, figure that out, but I think the one and the three might be good. Uh, Colleen and Ted?
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
This is Ted. Um, I know that we had this one time TIF amount. And we've been talking about that. And I'd like to know how that works now as we go forward.
Well, there, there is no longer any income from districts because they've been retired.
And I understand that. So just knowing that. So that we know that, okay, one to three percent without that TIF huge amount. Which was nine hundred thousand?
Uh, I think it was like six hundred and forty, something like that. That is, that is part of the nine point two seven one million. That was this year's operating tax levy.
And.
I'd just like to see that as well.
All right, but I'm, I'm.
It's had that, that TIF, that TIF thing that we did last year is now incorporated into our overall. Property tax levy. It's not a separate appropriation.
Right.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah. Um, and, and, and again, I just, I want to remind you that um. TIF money as well as other uh, sources of revenue, some of which have, have dried up. Were, were, were uh. Revenue lines that, you know, that revenue that we received. But did not necessarily budget to spend. As a part of our operating budget. They became a part of our fund balance, which is how we have traditionally. Spent for capital projects. So when you, so, you know, please remember that and, and think about that too, that. There were, there were, there were a number of, of lines of revenue that we would, that we would uh. That we would get. But we didn't, we didn't use that money to spend on any part of our operating budget. We reserved that in order to spend it. On, on capital projects. And so as, as those lines of revenue go away and as we need to uh, continue, you know, to, to make progress on capital expenditures. We have to make sure that, that we continue to have the revenue to do that. So I just, I, I just want to remind you that there were, there were always those lines that we, you know, we never, we never. We never said we were guaranteed on getting them like TIF money. And so we never, we never budgeted it to spend it as a part of our operating budget.
Thank you, David and Jeremy. And I think that, Mary Ann, that should answer some of your questions as well.
One thing I just thought about is. I could see somebody um, asking me or, and or throwing in my face in a few months. That Evanston closed two of their branches, so um, want to do my due diligence there and just say. Ask what that, what that would look like as far as cost savings goes.
Yeah, sure.
Can I, can I add though? So I was just reading an article about it. It, it sounded like. You know, they opened a new Robert Crown branch as well as their main branch, which are big. Buildings and the branches they closed are. Both much smaller and serve predominantly wider, wealthier areas. So it's from the article I was just reading, it seems like this was in the works already. And the pandemic kind of accelerated their timeline on it. So.
Thank you.
It seems like a pretty different position than where we are. To me.
Maybe, sure. Um, the other thing Jeremy was hoping, so, okay, so I, I think we're clear, at least I think I'm clear. That you want us, the next draft you want to see will include a, a, a one percent revenue increase through taxation and a three percent. So if I'm still, you know, not clear about that, please correct me, but that's what I'm hearing. The other thing Jeremy wanted some uh, maybe a little, just a little bit more conversation from all of you on. Is that this list of capital projects. So you can see that. These are all, in this list at least, these are the projects that we had outlined at the end of last year. And the beginning of this year to complete this year. Only a couple of these have been actually completed, like the ceiling of the parking lot and the ADA sidewalk improvement. Others were prepared to uh, to make some progress on this year, such as uh. Some improvement in our gallery or veterans room lighting and uh, the evaluation of our, of our security system, which, which does need. To be reevaluated. But others, uh, we, we don't, and I'll let Jeremy uh, give a little bit more uh. Information on, on some of these individual items, but there are others here that we do not necessarily. Have to, uh, have to try to complete this year if we uh, if we uh, don't think we want to spend the revenue this year to do them. Doesn't mean they're not important. It doesn't mean that they can't, they don't have to be done because these are some infrastructure things that. You know, are gonna, are going to be important to, to do in order to, to continue to maintain a building such as the maze branch. But if there, if you have opinions, strong opinions about whether there. But if there, if you have opinions, strong opinions about whether there are some things here that we should just hold off on, you know, please, please let us know. Jeremy, what do you think?
Yep, that's, yeah, if we can get approval, some of these we have quotes on, some we're holding, waiting for quotes on. That's why the tuck pointing at Mays, since that that came up in the discussion. If it was something that was a a strong consideration of the board, that may be something that, you know, we want to try and hold off another year on. It does need to be done, but the original estimate, I think, was fifty five thousand dollars. And then after discussion with Bullwin Andrews, who's our kind of contractor with a lot of this work, they said it was just one portion of that building. And I said, we don't want to, like, last year, we painted just part of that building, and there's other parts that need that painting as well. So I want to make sure that we're taking care of the the public buildings in a in a proper way. So that's why I put the number a hundred thousand in there to make sure that if we get a quote and it is that high that we have that 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 kind of awareness that it's going to come in that high to do the tuck pointing on that that building. The window glazing and painting, as I said, on the the sun facing side of that building. And if you're over there, the it's bare wood, and it's either repair it, paint it, or eventually replace the windows, which is going to be a lot more costly. As David mentioned, some of these things have already been done. Parking lot ceiling, it just wasn't invoiced, or we didn't get the invoice out to them yet. That the lights in the gallery room, some of those are, that dimmer control module is malfunctioning. And so we have a used component in there right now. So it's a matter of getting it upgraded, getting that all to LED so we can make sure that it we take care of the equipment properly. Part of it was the mix and match of old lit old lights with LED lights, which stressed that component out. The women's restroom partitions, those are facility staff have sort of tacked together with some bracing. Some of those, the stalls have don't close well, don't lock properly. So that's one of the things that was a high priority as well. And the security system evaluation, we went with Bully today with a couple of their construction managers to look at it, being a project lead and getting in some security consultants to really look at our security camera systems. We have cameras that are failing. It's a little outdated. And then also our security card access. The there's the software that we have, it's no longer supported. That was actually supposed to be looked at last year, but was deferred just when we're, I don't, I don't think we're ready to get that done last year. So the security system, that's another one that I think is, and particularly in these days, with the artwork that we have and things like that, that's another one that I I think we should move forward on. In next year's budget, as it's written, I think there's two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars for the replacement of that. So this is just the beginning of that project as well. And so if you have any questions on any of that, let me know. That's just kind of an overview. This is the estimate that we had moving forward. And with that in mind, one of the things in last month or the previous month, talked about the expectations of tax revenue receipt this fall. Since then, we did receive like this month or in July, one point four million of the tax, our fall tax receipts. So that's good news. It gives us a good position moving into next year, at least at this point. So I think there is some some space for that.
Thanks, Jeremy. So we are, in other words, we are, we are prepared to move forward this year on all of these projects unless you have strong opinions that we should postpone any of them.
I'm 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 personally comfortable with us moving forward with those.
Are there any other opinions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, Matt, then I think we have a staff leadership team. Jeremy and I have a lot to talk about regarding the budget, which we will do and prepare to bring another draft to you next month.
Excellent, we appreciate it.
Now, do you, it's, we're about hour three, do you still, does the board still want to go into closed session this evening?
Yes, I think very, I think we'll just have a, it won't, I don't expect it to be a long session this evening. And then next month, we will want to have a session to bring you in to present and discuss the conclusions we have with
Oh, okay.
Evaluation process. So we won't do that tonight, but we'll do that next month and we'll, so.
Okay, so then, as you now prepare to transition, I'll just, I'll just stay in this meeting. And then when you finish your closed session, you can just come back here to conclude and adjourn the meeting then.
Okay.
And and Matt, you're 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 okay, you're clear about about logging into the host that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great, perfect, okay.
Now I need to, should I, now I need to log into that.
Yeah, so you you would want to log out of this meeting, I'll stay here, and then and then and then relog back into Zoom using that other login and passwords that you can host that meeting. Is that clear?
Yep.
All right, and I'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. So Ted, I think you need to log out of this meeting temporarily and then log into the closed session. You're you're muted, Ted.
Hello, hello.
Hello, David. All right, I will wait till we get a quorum in here, and then I will declare us adjourned. And then, David, I'll give you a call tomorrow to follow up on a few things, but
I'll show you my kitty.
Yeah, my my dog is waiting patiently to go outside.
You don't want to face the party? Are we waiting on Virginia and Christian?
Just one of them, so we technically would have a a quorum to adjourn.
If they're if they're not coming back, I mean, you can you can still adjourn that.
Okay, well, we have concluded, I have declared that we have concluded all of our business as per the agenda, and we stayed adjourned till our next meeting.
Okay, David.
Oh, there's Christian, just in time for us to adjourn. We have a quorum, thank you, Christian.
I adjourned at nine P M. All right, thank you all, see you soon.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.